I did that intentionally for the record. I gave you guys all cinnamon and you threw out of the room.
Yeah. The other, the last time I like read it through, I read Sunday and I was like.
I'm not plugging them.
No, but I'm not going to.
I'll check it out.
Do you know if there's water? I forgot mine.
I think it's, uh, the friend lessons. I did that intentionally for the record. I gave you guys all cinnamon and you threw out of the room.
Hot spice because you're gonna give us nine.
I thought he was recruiting for the tech crew. Because he's always recruiting for tech. But that's why Halle loves, she has so much fun.
The fire truck?
Doing tech crew.
Willie Fine Arts?
No, here.
The theater crew?
Yeah. She will.
I want to get Lila into like theater.
Yes.
To Robert Wildwood, she's been at the other camps and been watching the whole podcast.
Oh, yeah.
I think she'd be great at it.
You might want to look at Willie Fine Arts on there.
Yeah.
Did you?
Good place.
Good evening. The July 11th, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Please keep your mobile phones on silent mode for the meeting. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Iaplo.
Here.
Ms. Justling.
Present.
Ms. Marchaza.
Present.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome everyone to the July 11th, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website, and the agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing on Tuesday prior to the Thursday board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda where the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it be an item on the agenda or another topic. To participate in the hearing of the public section, interested speakers must sign up prior to the start of the meeting. Signups are available online through the school district's website or on-site prior to 7:00 PM. You will be called to the microphone when it is your turn to speak. And at that time, we ask that you please state your name and address and address questions to the board president. Each person may speak only once per segment and comments are limited to three minutes. The purpose of the hearing of the public is for our community members to address the board. The board continues to welcome feedback from the community as an important component to conducting business. This is an information gathering opportunity for the board and administration so that we can work to best serve our community. If at the end of the public participation, we do not make a statement, please know this does not demonstrate a lack of care or comments shared by our community. Rather, we want to be thoughtful in our approach and we will provide a response in a timely manner when appropriate. In an effort to maintain an orderly meeting based on the Ohio Revised Code 2917.12 and Board Policy 0169.1, any persons doing any act which obstructs or interferes with the conduct or orderly progress of the board meeting will be warned and/or removed from the meeting. This meeting is being shown live and can be viewed on demand on our YouTube channel Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. Thank you. We do not have district highlights and recognitions this evening, so we will move on to approval of the minutes. Still moved?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I just wanted to make sure I had talked to Mr. Wade and he had mentioned that, um, he wasn't comfortable changing the actual minutes, but I can, you know, myself bring it up at the table here. I just want the minutes to reflect that last week, Mr. Heath's statement that I thought was very important, that the makeup of our, with the makeup of our current board donated books that lean left will be approved and any that are lean right would not be approved.
So, do you have an issue with the minutes?
I just wanted to state that for the record. You don't need to change the minutes for that.
So you don't want the minutes?
They'll be reflected in tonight's minutes.
You don't want the minutes amended though?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
One second. Sorry. Ms. Justling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next, we have hearing of the public on agenda items only.
Our first speaker is John Sanford.
Before we start, um, all speakers must meet our policy to speak publicly. And our policy does state that speakers must either reside within the district, own a business in the district, are guardian of a student in Mentor Public Schools, or are an elected official within the Mentor School District boundaries. Um, we have added additional measures to attempt to verify the addresses after some issues that we've had in the past. And when you come to the podium, we ask that you state your name and your address.
Can you hear me? We're having a heck of a time hearing you out here. Just, just, just share that with everyone that unless you want to do this very sodo voce, uh, we won't be able to participate in the thing. So please speak up. On that note though, I will tell you my name is John Sanford. I live on Parker Drive here in Mentor. Uh, and I would, just wanted to speak briefly to the, encourage the passage of the, of the policy changes that are in question today on the agenda. Simply stated, they do what we needed to do a long time ago. And that's take control of these issues and put it back in the hands of the parents. Uh, as stated, for example, on the policies of the Mentor Library, the library does not folk, function in loco parentis. Likewise, the school board should not function in loco parentis about.
Hey, sorry, point of order. It's really, there's a really bad echo and I can't, I can't hear Mr. Sanford.
Yeah.
Please stop the sound. There, we're getting some feedback is what I'm hearing.
Test, test. We good?
Not yet.
Okay. Uh, anyway, now where was I? Basically.
Oh, still not good.
It's still, yeah, echoey.
Would be better if we were up there.
Can we make sure we pause the time too, please?
It should be at 2:18.
Yeah.
Test, test.
It sounded better.
It sounds better.
Do our microphones sound better to everyone out there now?
Better.
Okay.
Is anyone in objection to having Mr. Sanford just restart?
No, that's fine.
I don't need that much time.
I'm sorry.
Anyway, so the point is that the board should not be trying to make those decisions for parents. Uh, it, it's kind of the same thing to give you a, an example. How would you feel as parents if the school board decided that they were going to make mandatory sex education for every student of their own choosing? Uh, that would probably get people's dander up a bit. Uh, and, um, the same thing is true if we did try to decide what books are going to be accessible to the kids. Instead, the parents should be making that decision. So I wanted to just say I support the changes that were discussed at the special meeting and encourage you to follow through on that and pass them hopefully unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mackenzie McAllister. Thank you. Our next speaker is Lindsay Wall.
Good evening, President Cook, members of the board, Superintendent Heath and Mr. Wade. I would like to express my support for the well-thought-out tiered book notification system policy that is on the agenda tonight. Actions speak louder than words and the actions by the majority of this board and our superintendent have proven that they are in fact willing to listen, compromise, and do what is best for everyone in this school district. I am a parent of two elementary school students in this district, two boys who seem to have less in common by the day. What I, as their mother, may find appropriate or necessary for one of my boys will almost certainly not be the same for the other one. While my younger son might actually be able to handle more mature content or feel less afraid after a certain topic is discussed, I have to be a bit more careful with my older son. Every child is different. Every student is unique. We all have our own triggers. I struggle with finding common ground in my own home, so I cannot imagine how difficult it is to meet all needs in a very large public school district. But the tiered book notification system really does cover all the bases. Not only does this policy protect parental rights, it also promotes parental responsibility. President Cook, I was shocked and very disappointed to hear Annie and Rose give such a misleading interpretation of this policy earlier today on a radio show. The far-right radio host who interviewed them was actually under the impression that the new policy would take away a parent's right to know what their kids are reading, when in fact the policy does the exact opposite. Not only does this tiered policy let parents know exactly what their children are reading, it also gives complete control over what books their children can and cannot read to those few parents who want it. I also want to express my support for the decision to end book donations and I suggest returning all of the books which had been recently donated. While Annie and Rose, along with their group of vocal complainers, found issue with Mr. Heath's comments last week about the makeup of this board, I respected his words because he was not wrong. Elections do have consequence, have consequences, and I believe that if the board was made up differently, Mr. Heath would have said the exact same thing and made the same choice. However, I also believe that the two who found issue with his comments, they would not be complaining if Gill had won, but he did not get lost. Continuously making false claims about certain board members belonging to a certain political party makes no difference when we can see month after month that you President Cook, along with a few others up on that stage, do not let their political affiliation get in the way of making pro-public school choices. Politics and religion have no space in a board member's decision-making. I strongly urge a yes vote on the policy changes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shannon Barnhill.
Hi, my name is Shannon Barnhill, uh, 8099 Hart Road. I have three sons, the oldest of which just completed first grade at Ridge Elementary. Uh, when he was in kindergarten, a new friend came over to play and as we discussed being enrolled in Mentor, the mother told me that her older daughter will be leaving Memorial at the end of the year because she was quote, "exhausted from trying to fly under the radar." And I was very confused because I'd never heard of a pre-teen who didn't want to be seen or acknowledged. Fast forward to this year and now I understand because I too am exhausted from trying to navigate the current academic climate of this school system. As a family, we are usually not the type, or we are usually the type to let those around us live their lives as they see fit unless it is forced upon us. I do not look for fights or causes anymore. I'm not trying to storm any castles. I left that in my youth. Um, I just want to set a good example and let my children enjoy every moment they can of their childhood before they are forced to understand the intricacies of the adult world. Unfortunately, the chaotic discord of this board is negatively impacting even good, moderate families like our own. When it came to our time at Ridge, we were always willing to volunteer or donate items and I've accepted every single opportunity to be involved in my child's education. But the ability to monitor my child's access to items within the classroom and to take home that I don't believe align with our family's desire to protect their innocence is being taken from our control. Your vote tonight will either further that damage or protect our children. For example, my five-year-old son brought home historically accurate books about World War II because he loved airplanes. He didn't need to see the graphic photos of the war and full chapters on Hitler at five years old. He would have been just as content with a book showing basic pictures of airplanes and I wouldn't have had to carefully turn each page of the book he so excitedly brought me home to show me, ultimately giving him two tiny little pictures of planes and then sending it back. There are plenty of items we could show our kids, but why should we show our kids? What is the rush? Why are we providing in-class materials to complex issues that could be easily misconstrued at such a young age without notifying parents of what is available to their child? While I never expected this to be our path due to policies passed by this board and the overall feeling that the board's primary interest is in providing academic experiences based on social issues instead of academics, we as a family have decided to pull our children from Mentor Schools and homeschool them with help from the local growing community like us. I understand you receive a lot of feedback. I do as well in my position with a nonprofit. But let me be clear, you are so aggressive in your push to include that you are losing the moderates. At this rate, you will have nothing left but ashes from this district burnt to the ground. Please find a way to come together for the good of the children instead of the good of yourselves. You can start by continuing to allow greater parental access or greater parental accessibility to our own children's reading materials.
Thank you.
Our next, our next speaker is Susan Sednik.
Good evening. My name is Susan Sednik. I'm at 7539 Little Mountain Road in Mentor. Um, I would like to reference the agenda items, uh, related to the policy changes and stuff. Um, I just want to express my disappointment with the decision, not only that we retain sexually explicit materials in our schools, but now we're making the decision to do away with the parental notification of sexual content in those books. It's very obvious that the policy that you swore in just several months ago was never meant to last. Since Mrs. Payne proposed it and because she's not one of the left extremists, it was inevitable that this was doomed. Just more evidence that this board cares neither for the students nor the parents. As for book donations, it was also inevitable that this would end. Far be it for, for patriotic, family-loving community members to try and provide wholesome books for young minds. But of course, there will never be room for anything other than extreme leftist material for the students as that is all that Maggie, Ginny, and Lauren will permit. The board tells us that they need money, but when everyday folks offer to help purchase some books to help balance out the selections that are currently in the library, suddenly they don't need that kind of money. And as our superintendent said, there's never going to be conservative material being allowed in because the board is so far left. Um, we're never going to have a fair and balanced plan from our schools because the board is led by extreme leftists who want to see the destruction of our families, destruction of traditional moral values and our American way of life. Whatever the conservative side proposes or recommends, it's never going to go through just because the leftist board members like to have control and want to push the liberal agenda. This is typical bullying behavior and it's no wonder there's a bullying problem in our schools because our administration is rife with it. And that's fine with me. I'm still going to be part of that unimportant 25% who keeps, who's going to keep speaking up for what's right. I'm going to keep recommending books to you and I will also be contributing to all that wasted time rehashing those same old things. I know everybody's really tired of listening to us, but I'm going to keep coming. Anyway, I hope, you know, I hope you don't cut out public speaking time, but that's, you know, if you do, you do. But it's just more evidence that you're corrupt. Thanks.
Thank you.
Larry Morgan.
Hi, I'm Larry Morgan from 7975 Britford Road. In 2001, following the attack by terrorists, you couldn't go down most any road in this country without seeing signs that said, "God bless America and in God we trust." Well, fellow Americans, we're under attack again, only this time largely from within. Many of our own school board members have been infecting our children with curriculum, trying to promote and normalize homosexual behavior, grooming vulnerable and impressionable children with insane lies to believe that they can change the gender that God made them, content that subtly and purposely stirs racial tension. It's inappropriate and encourages activism of only left-leaning causes politically. There's a book entitled The Bluest Eye, for example, and it has detailed description of a father repeatedly raping his own daughter. This book includes bestiality and vivid sexual situations. Another book called Transphobia Deal With It promotes sex changes and is not actually subtle at all. Finally, I know of a book called Right Now For, and it's, and it's called Right Now For Kindergarten Through Fifth Grade Children, and it tells kids that doctors can make a mistake at birth and assign the wrong gender. This evil is being promoted in spite of God's laws that forbid adultery and make it clear that sodomy is one of the sins that cry to heaven for vengeance. The enemy within tries to pose as righteous by pretending to be compassionate to someone that is afflicted with what only a few years ago was known as a disorder. True compassion would be to advise someone with mental health issues to seek psychiatric help from someone that could explain the truth. A man cannot become a woman. Logic and science confirm this. A child cannot become an animal called a furry. It's long past time that we, the people, defend our precious children by removing any employee of ours in the education field that seeks to indoctrinate these lies. It's so obvious that it's wrong and evil. Why do you think they hope to keep it secret from the parents? Some educators have become so arrogant as to believe they know better than us what is right for our own children. I have multiple properties in Mentor and good schools are important to me, but this isn't just about Mentor. This is about our country. I beg you fellow Americans to object to this absurdity and purposeful confusion that is likely part of the cause of increased mental problems linked to school shootings, drug use, and sexual promiscuity. Demand that these books be removed along with this insane doctrine altogether. And if any board member under our employ refuses, they must be removed too.
Thank you.
Melanie Majakas.
Good evening. Melanie Majakas, I live on Bertie Lane. Um, and I am speaking tonight, I think probably for at least the fifth or sixth time in the past couple of years when we've been talking about books. Uh, tonight speaking in favor of the policy changes that are being proposed. I think it's unfortunate, uh, that there was so much misinformation that was disseminated about the changes that are being made tonight. I don't think that was helped really with the materials that were available to the public to review for tonight. I think, um, clearer materials might have given people a clearer sense of what we are talking about tonight because some of the situations that have been mentioned here tonight would actually be resolved, um, with this policy. And all this policy does is give power to the parents to determine what books their children should see. And that's not a decision that a teacher or a librarian should make because every child is different, every parent is different, and it should be squarely on the shoulders of parents to make those decisions for their own children. I'm fully in favor of the policy as it is being changed tonight. Um, this, this conversation has really gone on for far too long. Seventy-five percent of people in the community survey indicated that they had no concern with the materials we have in our libraries and the schools. And a strong majority in the Levy survey indicated that they are tired of these divisive culture war topics. Board members who like to bring up statistics only when they think the results are favorable to them should pay attention to that. I also want to take the opportunity tonight to comment on the hypocrisy of Mrs. Payne and Mrs. Iaplo's very public and enthusiastic support of people in the community who make and sell pornography for a living online where it is accessible to minors. I worked for several years at a nonprofit organization that helped children and adults who had been sexually abused. I can assure you that the people who perpetrated the abuse of the clients that we serve there were not spending their time going to the library to read excerpts from The Bluest Eye before committing their crimes on their victims. But numerous studies have demonstrated the link between men with sexually aggressive behavior and their use of visual pornography. It is the height of hypocrisy that you would so warmly embrace those who participate in these activities that are linked to sexual assault of children. And it's absolutely shameful and clearly demonstrates your lack of real interest in protecting children in our schools from sexual assault and serves only as a political talking point for you. Thank you.
Thank you. I would, I would like to, I would like to clarify something. Um, I'm always for people's freedom of speech, but I do consider a lot of those comments slanderous. I never have and never will support pornography. Um, I, I never have supported pornography and, and, uh, I find that very offensive that somebody would say that I support pornography when I'm fighting for children to not see sexually explicit materials in school.
Point of order, point of order. Is this public comment? I think it's.
There's no rule against not speaking. Thank you.
I think we should turn it over to the public.
I echo, I echo Annie's statements. Can you guys hear me?
I can't hear.
Turn these on. Can you hear me? I echo Annie's statements and, and, and Ms. Marchaza, we certainly offer, um, the public their First Amendment right, but we don't lose ours sitting up here.
No, but this is really for the public to speak.
That's okay. And, and we don't, we usually don't comment, but if somebody's going to make, um, defamatory comments about us, we have every right to defend ourselves.
Absolutely.
Mr. Wade, do we have any other speakers?
Uh, yes. We have four more. Our next speaker is Lynn Mazika.
Madam, we're now broken. Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Wade, Mr. Heath, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I am in support of the proposed changes to board policy on library materials and the addition of Option A to the administrative guidelines. This would be a great pro-parental rights system that puts parents in full control of the books their kids select. There may be many reasons why a parent would not want their child to read a particular book. And these guidelines respect and enable a parent's wishes to be followed without causing a child to leave the library without a book. With these guidelines in place, there is no longer a need for 2505.03. That section is too vague, too cumbersome to implement, and unnecessary if Option A is added to the administrative guidelines. The community has made it clear in a recent survey that the book issue needs to be resolved. The board, Mr. Heath and his team have created a tiered system that all board members have supported at one point or another. Let's approve these changes and get on to some of the issues that our community finds to be more important. Thank you for the entire board and administration for your efforts to adopt a reasonable, workable system. These are the same comments I emailed to the board, but in case you've been busy and have a. loophole for parents to have a false sense of security. Mr. Heath said Mennor did not add any books for this past school year, so there's less than 20 books that have been challenged. So unless I am incorrect, there are less than 20 books that are flagged for sexual content right now. I applaud President Cook and Mr. Heath meeting the needs of the community and coming up with a solution that all parents can get behind. This encompasses parents from all spectrums, including the small portion of parents who are concerned with reading materials in our schools. This is a much more comprehensive way to protect individual children, because who knows them better than their parents? Also, as far as I'm aware, it will cost the district nothing to implement. This also frees up hours that Mr. Heath was spending on the book challenges, and time is money. That's what defending district dollars looks like. This policy also does not infringe on any other student's rights to read what their parents allow. Recently, Ms. Iopolo said on her Facebook page that protecting the minds of our youth should be the top priority of all five board members. Actually, that's not the job of a board member; that is my job as a parent. I want to see the board working together to put differences aside and work on issues that can unite us all, such as increasing our academic and literacy scores, seeking solutions to our bullying and disciplinary issues, and making Mennor schools a safe and welcoming learning environment for all students. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Jacqueline McCormick.
I'm Jacqueline McCormick. I live on Ridgefield Trail in Mennor. Mrs. Cook, Mrs. Jessling, and Mrs. Marchesa continue to hide important information from the public. Not only have they violated the Open Meetings Act several times, they continue to take away the voice of the public in order to further their agenda. At the last special meeting, they argued against the request to place another bonus and raise for Mr. Heath on the agenda of the regular board meeting where the public can speak just one week later. I assure you, fighting against the taxpayers' right to speak is not going to fare well for you when you go to ask for a levy. Remember, it's our money you keep spending. There continues to be negative rhetoric from board members about people who don't have kids in the system but speak up. I've got news for you. The majority of the tax dollars that support this school are from people who don't have kids in the system. We make up 70% of your revenue. There is no taxation without representation, and until you quit taking our money, you will continue to hear from us. You three talk about safety like it's a real priority, but you want to take away a policy that protects children from sexually explicit materials? You're admitting to everyone that we have no standard and that we do possess graphic sexually explicit harmful materials available to minor children. There's no harm in retaining the policy, but potential harm in removing it. There's also a future legal liability that you may face due to pending House Bill 556. In seven states, bills have passed that could cause possible criminal prosecution of school and library personnel and thousands of dollars in fines for providing sexually explicit, obscene, or harmful books to children. Ohio's House Bill 556 would allow this. Current law in Ohio exempts school personnel from prosecution for pandering obscenities to minors. Since school boards continue to vote to retain sexually explicit books for students, the state is now going to step in and help you do your job of protecting children. If you truly want a safe environment for all children, sexually explicit materials should not be allowed in our schools, especially given to children by trusted adults. You three keep bringing up the 75% of survey respondents who were not concerned about the books in schools. Did you give examples of the books that we have in our schools that are controversial or contain graphically sexually explicit scenes of rape and molestation when you asked the question in the survey? No, you didn't. You know people would be appalled. First, at the recommendation of Superintendent Heath, the board majority voted to retain sexually explicit books about molestation and pedophilia. Then you voted down the policy proposal to prevent having sexually explicit materials in school and setting a standard. Now you are voting to remove the simple notification process to flag books and make parents aware that some books may have sexual content or be harmful to children. You continue to show the public that this is an unsafe environment. You admit we have harmful materials, and when parents complain, you tell them that it's now your job to keep these harmful materials from the school's library out of your children's hands. Continue to retain this harmful material, and the next levy will fail. We will have an effort to ensure that it does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our superintendent's report and recommendations.
For my comments this evening, I'd like to provide everyone with a high-level overview of the community survey that we conducted as part of our strategic planning process. This is step one of two, which next month we will have our strategic plan presented to our community as well. We selected Triad Research, an outside independent research firm, to develop, deploy, and analyze the survey for us. You can find the survey report from Triad Research on our website to view in detail, including demographic breakdowns like parents or non-parents. But today, I will share a few slides and let everyone know how we are moving forward with this valuable input from our community. To start off, we ran the survey for about three weeks in late April and early May. We were fortunate enough to receive 2,066 responses to the survey, which is two and a half times more responses than we received on the last community survey. The experts at Triad told us that they are happy when surveys they deploy have a margin of error of plus or minus 5%. With the number of responses we received, the margin of error was plus or minus 2.2%. So this was a very valid survey. Jumping into the results now, the first question on the survey was, "How would you rate the quality of education provided by Mennor schools?" We were pleased that this received a favorable response, with 81% saying "good" or "excellent", while 17% said "fair" or "poor," and 2% were unsure. A big part of what we believe contributes to providing the high-quality education that children in our community need is to offer an array of opportunities so that we are ensuring a well-rounded educational experience. So we asked, "How would you rate Mennor schools when it comes to offering a well-rounded and balanced curriculum, including relevant electives, extracurricular activities, academic and social clubs, et cetera?" Again, there was a favorable response here, as 78% said "excellent" or "good," with 17% saying "fair," "poor," and 6% unsure. In regards to school safety, we asked the question, "How would you rate Mennor schools when it comes to providing a safe learning environment?" 63% of respondents said "good" or "excellent," 34% said "fair" or "poor," and 3% are not sure. More specifically, we asked everyone to please indicate the extent to which you favor or oppose Mennor Public Schools investing in each of the following. Some of those things that we uncovered here were that 86% favor installing security vestibules where needed, 83% favor hiring additional security or school resource officers, which, again, we are very hopeful that this will be happening in the next couple of weeks as we continue our conversations with the city on the contract that we discussed with our School Safety Committee board representatives here in early June. We also had 64% say they were in favor of creating single-stall restrooms for student privacy. One area of school safety in which we see significant room for improvement is in our approach to student discipline. Only 35% responded favorably, while 52% indicated a "fair" or "poor" rating, and 12% were not sure. This is something that we are committed to continue working on as a team. I met with our middle school and high school administrators right after school let out in early June to start discussing the data surrounding our student discipline incidents for this school year. We're looking closely at how we can improve many of the mean behavior incidents we see in our schools and are creating plans to do the following. Number one, how do we code each of the incidents in our system to accurately capture whether it is a major or minor incident? Does it fit the state definitions of bullying, harassment, and intimidation? Or does it need to be classified as a different type of mean behavior? By completing this work, we will be able to clear up some of the confusion around the bullying incidents that get reported to the state and that are posted on our website. As a reminder, we have started to not just post the required bullying data on our website, but we are now sharing data on all of the mean behaviors we see in the district during the school year. Second thing that we're looking closely at is what consequences we have been giving in the past for different incident types, and we are seeing improvements and where we are seeing improvements in future behaviors. As I've said before, we cannot suspend or expel our way out of this problem, but we need to make sure that our consequences fit the type of incident and have plans in place to help the student modify their behavior. We are also looking closely at what programs and supports we currently have in place to learn about and promote positive behaviors. We need to look at our advisory periods, our transition programs from fifth to sixth grade and eighth to ninth grade, and the resources we bring in from our educational service centers, crossroads, and signature health to make sure that they are addressing our students' needs. And finally, we need to look at what programs do we need to develop to help address some of the student discipline. One of the arguments that I often hear is that a student may have had a major incident and got suspended for a couple of days, but then they are right back in the school building and in the classrooms, and it does not seem like they were disciplined appropriately. People also say that by suspending a student out of school for a couple of days, we're just giving them some time off, and that's really what they wanted anyway. What I would like to see is the creation of some programs that might be in addition to the suspension, where we could bring them into an alternative setting immediately following a suspension, to make sure that they stay current with their coursework, but then to also have some of the mental health, behavior, and counseling support that they need before they re-enter the large, comprehensive middle school or high school buildings that we have here in Mennor. Our building administrative teams will continue working on this over the next several weeks as we get ready to start the 24-25 school year. I will also continue to provide updates on our work around student discipline over the next couple of months of board meetings. Another topic covered in the survey related to the controversy surrounding media center materials, asking, "How would you describe your level of concern regarding the appropriateness of books and materials available in the library media center?" 25% expressed they are concerned or very concerned, while 75% expressed no concern, low concern, or were unsure. With the policies being voted upon this evening and the corresponding administrative guidelines, parents will have complete control over the library media center materials that our students will be able to access. Additionally, any future book challenges that have not already been reviewed will run through a committee that would be selected from our superintendent, our director of curriculum, one of whom would be serving as a chairperson for the committee, our curriculum specialist, the building principal, the media specialist, teachers from that particular grade band, and any others deemed necessary by the chairperson of that committee. Another set of questions asked respondents to rate the importance they would place on various topics, and then to rate how well the district is performing in those areas. What we saw in the responses are very high levels of agreement that these topics are important, but also that we have room for growth in our performance around these topics. Here are some of those data points. 91% of respondents said it's important for Mennor Schools to, quote, "help students become good global citizens," end quote. 88% said it's important that we, quote, "develop and implement programs that address the social and emotional needs of students." 86% said it's important that we prepare students to navigate a culturally diverse world. And 91% said it's important to balance the use of digital media or screen time in the classroom versus more traditional paper-and-pencil-type instruction. As I mentioned, the ratings for our performance in addressing these topics were lower, kind of in the mid-to-upper 40% ranges, so we will be looking at ways to improve in these areas throughout the year. 76% of those who took the survey responded favorably that the district is doing a good job keeping you informed. However, only 58% of people said that they were aware that the Ohio Department of Education awarded Mennor Public Schools an overall rating of 4.5 out of 5 stars on our latest state report card. And only 47% of respondents were aware that Mennor residents pay the third-lowest property taxes in Lake County. Those are definitely two facts worth sharing more, because Mennor Schools is a good return on your investment in one of the top three academic-performing districts in Lake County with the third-lowest property taxes. The survey showed agreement there as well. 70% of respondents said that Mennor Public Schools provides a good return on your investment, while only 16% disagreed and 14% weren't sure. There are many other questions on the survey that I've not gone over here, and again, all of that information is posted on our website for you to view in detail, and I would encourage you to do so. I do want to take this opportunity to thank everyone who took the time to offer their feedback. It's been a valuable piece of information for us administratively as we move through the strategic planning process. We will present our updated strategic plan to the community at our August meeting. You will see that many of the ideas and areas of improvement coming out of the community survey will be included in some of the big moves of our strategic plan. As always, we will focus on working together to provide the best educational experience possible for our students.
Mr. Heath, can I ask a question about the survey? How did Triad Research verify the residency of the respondents to the survey?
They do a lot of that through IP address.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I have the following recommendation listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of Item 6A1.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Iopolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchesa.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the resolution adopting the 2024-2025 Calamity Day Alternative Make-Up Plan.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Iopolo.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchesa.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the resolution adopting the 2024-2025 Calamity Day Alternative Make-Up Plan.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Iopolo.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchesa.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to certified personnel and C2 through C4, all related to human resource matters.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Iopolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchesa.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the resolution adopting the 2024-2025 Calamity Day Alternative Make-Up Plan.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Iopolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchesa.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the resolution adopting the 2024-2025 Calamity Day Alternative Make-Up Plan.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Iopolo.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchesa.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the resolution adopting the 2024-2025 Calamity Day Alternative Make-Up Plan.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Iopolo.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchesa.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the resolution adopting the 2024-2025 Calamity Day Alternative Make-Up Plan.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Iopolo.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchesa.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to certified personnel and C2 through C4, all related to human resource matters.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Iopolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchesa.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval
So moved. under Board Business is the approval of our Mentor Public Library trustee. Second? Do I have a motion? Any discussion?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling? Ms. Jessling?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Cook? Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Aapolo? Ms. Aapolo?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
This concludes my part of tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Next, we have the Board of Education report and recommendations, and the first item under Board Business is the approval of our Mentor Public Library trustee. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion?
Just want to say thank you to the folks who did apply. We had some fantastic candidates, and I enjoyed talking with them very much. We have some clearly devoted folks to our library, and it was a really tough choice. Ultimately, I'm very excited about Mr. Meacham joining the Board there.
And thank you to Mrs. Marchaza and Ms. Aapolo, who did volunteer to interview our candidates. Thank you very much. Any more discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Aapolo?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
The second item under Board Business is the second reading and approval of the Mentor Board of Education Neola policies. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions and then some comments as well. The first question I had is, normally when we are removing a policy, it'll show as like struck through with red, and I didn't see that in here for the sexual content policy. It was only the complaints that was struck through. Is there a reason why we didn't put the sexual content policy on here as struck through to show that it was being removed?
That was in all the Google docs that we'd shared with the Board over the last couple of months, and I do believe it was in the agenda on Board Docs.
It doesn't show on the agenda. It just says, like, if you go to, unless I'm missing it, which is possible.
Page five.
Yeah. So page, okay, so page five, it's only speaking to complaints regarding sexually explicit content. The special meeting that we had, the, had the layout typically when we do vote to remove something, it shows that red struck through the entire policy so that, you know, the public as well can see that we're getting rid of that policy. This is only stating we're getting rid of the complaints regarding sexually explicit content, not the actual policy.
I thought our discussion talked about reverting to Option A, and that was the comprehensive look at how this policy would change back to the basic Neola framework.
Yeah, that was the discussion. I'm just saying it's not in, it's not in here as being like struck through like we would typically see it when we get rid of a policy. It normally is all red with struck through, so that this, this appears to me like it's we're just getting rid of the complaints regarding library media materials, complaints regarding supplementary instructional materials, and complaints regarding sexually explicit content.
And it was listed in the first reading?
Yeah, that's why it's odd, it's odd that it's not on here. At first, I did think the same thing, that, oh, okay, we're getting rid of it through there, which obviously I have an opinion on that, but it, I compared it with Option A at the special meeting, and Option A did list that whole policy as being struck through. I don't know.
Yeah, those were, those were pulled off entirely. Again, we, we probably could have put those on there. I didn't realize that 25-2001, 02, and 03 were not included tonight.
We're getting a big echo.
What was posted? Is the policy that we're going to vote on, so what is, what is not struck?
Because those are not going to be voted on because they're completely gone at this point.
Now.
Coming out of the first reading that we had last week.
If they're gone, it only takes one vote to remove a policy? Because historically speaking, we have always had first reading and then, especially if there's other changes, and then, you know, a second reading where there's a vote, and that's the final vote to actually remove them. So.
Right, so this is the second reading?
But, but it's not, what I'm saying is like, it's not in there, so it's just not, is that how we're going to go forward then? If we remove a policy, it's just one vote as a first reading, and that's it? Then, then it's out?
Because again, we're voting on Policy 25-20. That entire series eliminated everything from 01, 02, and 03, similar to what we had put.
Right, that's how I understood it too, and that's what we saw last week, but it's just, I'm just saying for technical, technical reasons, shouldn't we have something that shows that, just so that we're all making sure we're voting, everyone's clear what we're voting on?
I think what Mrs. Payne is asking is, is 65-20.02 out as we stand right now? And I would say no. 25-20.02 is still our current policy. Now, that may be different at the end of this meeting, but it is current policy right now. What we are looking at right now is Policy 25-20. Would it look like this at the end of this meeting?
So the 25-20.01, 25-20.02, and 25-20.03, the way it appears, it looks like we're just getting rid of the complaints regarding those items. I don't have a problem voting on it tonight to remove, because I came here prepared for that. I'm just stating that I think that maybe in the meeting minutes, we can notate at least that that is exactly what we're voting on, is to remove the sexual content policy.
Yeah, we are, we are voting to replace our current 25-20 selection in its entirety with this new 25-20.
So including .01, .02, and .03? Okay. It just, it doesn't appear the same as it did at the special meeting.
I can have Kristen pull it up real quick, too.
Yeah, that, actually, that would be great if you could just, I don't mind voting on it, I just.
I just sent you the Google doc that we were looking at.
Thank you, Mr. Heath.
Just for transparency purposes.
Should we continue discussion while we wait?
That would be great. Do we want to do discussion on each policy separately? Just to be clear, so we're on Policy 25-20 right now, so let's limit our discussion to Policy 25-20. We have a motion and a second, so we're looking for discussion on 25-20. Mrs. Payne has asked questions. Anyone with discussion?
I had questions about the library books. So it appears like what we're doing is taking any library challenges and placing them in administrative guidelines. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, so the entire challenge process goes to 91-30, where it lives in Neola, and then in the administrative guidelines for 25-20. And 91-30, you'll see the process laid out.
So there is policy.
It's just under 91-30.
It is now 91-30.
And that's where it typically lives, in Neola.
It doesn't live in administrative guidelines, so there are still the opportunity for challenges under 91-30. Is that correct?
Correct.
Even for, can I just be clear, the, for library materials? Because it says instructional materials, and I just want to make sure that that is, that includes library books and Media Center materials.
And that's why we've got the clarification in the administrative guidelines in both places now, too.
Okay, so it's just where, it's just living in a different place, people can still make challenges, okay?
And, and the committee process is a little, whoa, a little different. There's a committee now that's going, which I, I support, I've said it over the last year, that I don't like you having to have to make all those decisions yourself. Okay, I had another.
So if you scroll down a little bit there, Kristen?
There you go, yeah.
So there's Policy 25-20, and you can see what is red highlighted and stricken from that policy as a starting point. And go ahead and keep going. So that's the part that's actually posted on Board Docs right now. Then there's 25-20-01, which is completely stricken. And again, that one's focused on supplementary materials. And then there's 25-20-02, which is the library Media Center materials. And then 25-20-03, which was the sexual content policy.
So to be clear, Mr. Heath, you, you just reduced these policies in this cleaner version to make it cleaner, right, and easier to read? Okay, just so we all understand. Thank you.
So any of the policies that are being completely stricken through were not included in the clean version?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Heath, I was just wondering if you could explain, because I know you did before when this was Option A, and this is still giving me an echo, you supported Option A. Can you, can you explain why you support the removal of the sexual content policy?
Because with the new library Media Center material checkout process that is included in the administrative guidelines, that takes everything away and allows the parents the complete control.
Do you think that there's any harm in keeping it? Do you, do you foresee any harm in, in removing it and possibly a parent that, you know, looks at the title, looks up a review, and is like, oh, okay, it looks, looks fine, and then their child reads it, and it, and this child may have, you know, been sexually abused, and now that child's damaged? Like, there's harm there, right? Like, that, can you understand that that might happen?
I understand both sides of the argument, but again, the, the new policy, the new administrative guidelines, that new procedure that we have in place is going to take care of all of that for us now.
So I, I think that, two things. So the, the two-tiered system is actually, we're not voting on that tonight. That's not a policy change. It's going to live in administrative guidelines, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So there was a lot of emails that we had received stating that was a policy change. And actually, in the survey that we sent out, it stated that we were going to produce a policy. So I'm wondering if there would be Board support to put that into the policy? That way, you know, administrative guidelines, we don't approve of, we don't review, I mean, unless Mr. Heath provides them to us, which he does, but they can be taken in and out. And if we don't have a policy on it, then it can be removed at any point. So I didn't know if there would be Board support, because I think we're all on the same page that we do support that system, and that it is a really good added layer of parental rights that we can offer. I, I don't understand why we wouldn't put it in a policy, so I'm hoping that we can all support that going.
I think we, we did talk about this last time, and, or at least I know I did, because I thought about that, too, and what would be the advantages to having in policy versus administrative guidelines? And I think what we remember, I remember us kind of discussing was that it does give the administrative team a little more flexibility when implementing a new system. You know, you might need to tweak it as you go and, and kind of change things and improve the system as you find, you know, sort of trial by error, you'll find maybe some ways to improve the program before, after you implement it. So I think, you know, doesn't, doesn't it require to change policy that, you know, we'd have to come back to a board discussion and a vote? And I think there's an entire protocol around that that would make things a little more difficult to do and a little less seamless. And so having something like this live in administrative guidelines, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Heath, but I think it gives you a little more flexibility to change it on the fly, right?
Correct.
Yep.
I, I understand what you're saying. I'm just not quite sure what flexibility is needed. At this point, it's just a two-tiered system to provide parental notifications.
You know, it sounds simple, yeah, it does, but.
And to, you know, allow parents to approve of books prior to them being checked out. I think it's really, it's a great thing, but I think in order to show the public, we should have in policy like, so that it matches our survey that we sent out stating that that's what we were going to do.
I think in this case, leaving it in the administrative guidelines, because it's clear that we're in agreement, that that is the system that we would like implemented. One of the things that I, I've looked at is I've pondered the logistics, you know? For example, let's say you need to allow two weeks or three days for this pickup of materials. If you have it in policy, it's laid out quite specifically, which would make it maybe impossible to make that minor adjustment. We have 34,673 books across the district in our buildings. We have one media specialist, we have six library clerks, and there's been a fair amount of turnover in that position. So how that training will occur and how clearly and efficiently that's going to be possible, you know, we maybe need to buy some extra shelving or containers or whatever it's going to be to make it a practical way to implement this. So by using the original Neola policy, what I like about that is it gets to the essence of what's needed. We certainly have made very clear our expectation that the two-tiered system will be implemented as of this school year, and we leave it then to Mr. Heath to work with his team to make that happen. You know, just in general, I think we all agree that nobody knows their children better than their parents or guardians, and substituting our judgment or trying to prescreen books or try to have some kind of a list is impossible to do in a way that is better than having the parent simply make that choice for their, their student. The other thing that I worry about is I've listened to lots of the back and forth and some of the discussions on social media, is we've had these five book challenges. Two of them were books that had sexual content, concerns about that. The other books were other issues. And so out of 34,673 books, I think it's misleading to imply that there's a lot of concerning titles, but from one person's point of view, even classic literature, like we've talked about before, whether it's a Steinbeck novel or other works, that those have some sexual content. And for some parents, that may be enough to say, I don't want my child to have access to that book. And it's my understanding, from the curriculum standpoint, anything that is being taught in the classroom will still have that parental notification system in play. So if I'm a teacher and I'm presenting a unit with this particular book, let's say, To Kill a Mockingbird, I'm going to make my students, parents, and guardians aware this title's going to be studied, there is some sexual content, and should the parent have a preference for a substitution, then I will honor that. And so, Mr. Heath, correct me if I'm mistaken, that is still our plan for curricular materials? Is that correct?
Correct.
So that's the one area where there is a much higher level of scrutiny, and every student in that class is being invited to read that book. And so that's very different. And maybe a substitute would be a good choice for a particular student, and that matter can be also handled through our administrative guidelines, and that takes care of the needs of our students in a thoughtful, prudent way, and that, that comforts me. As far as the other aspects of the secondary pieces of the policy, identifying materials, we've talked already about some of the pitfalls that fall into place with that, where if we go to the Neola policy, that House Bill 556, if that should move through the legislative process and be enacted, then Neola will give us updates so that we modify whatever we need to. So we're not incurring additional legal expenses to verify the tweaking that a policy may need, and we are in compliance with the current Ohio law, which is very important to all of us. We all take that oath when we're sworn in as Board members that we are going to uphold the Ohio Constitution as well as the U.S. Constitution.
Let me make a suggestion, kind of taking, Andy, what you're talking about as well. So within the, the administrative guideline, the, the main, the main part of that policy or that guideline says, "Library Media Center material checkout procedures." says, "Library Media Center Material Checkout Procedures," and then it says, "These guidelines will be followed in the Library Media Center Material Checkout Process. A. In the annual update, parents select the Library Media Center access for their student. One. Open access. Student may check out any material from the Library Media Center. Two. Reserved access. Parent must approve any material prior to the checkout from the Library Media Center." If we took that section out of the administrative guideline 2520 and included that in the policy itself, and then to Lauren's point, the remainder where we've got the elementary school library and we've got those procedures spelled out, which potentially could change, then we've got the middle school, high school library procedures. And again, those things, depending on how things go the next couple of years and with new technology pieces, those things could change. If we could leave that in the guideline that we can tweak on the run, but we still capture that we've got this two-tiered process in the policy itself. So again, when my time here is done, the next superintendent will still be referring back to that policy, knowing, okay, open access, reserved access are part of what we do. The administrative guideline may be tweaked. I would suggest maybe if we're looking at a kind of a collaborative approach to this, if we can pull that piece out, so it would literally be on that administrative guideline, letter A, numbers one and two, which are open access and reserved access, that that language be included in the policy 2520. And then let's leave the elementary school process and the middle school, high school process in the administrative guidelines, because that's where the technical things may change considerably over time based on the technology.
So, Mr. Heath, could we motion to amend, in the policy, in the proposed policy 2520, in the third paragraph down, it says, "The guidelines shall include a plan for the review of instructional materials by staff and parents," and then a statement?
Then include that section on Library Media Center Material Checkout Procedures.
Right. There will be a two-tiered Library Media Center checkout procedure. And then, I'm not sure what else you wanted to include in there, if we could maybe look at that online.
I have a quick question, too. There's a lot of changes with this one vote. I was wondering if we could do a motion to divide the question, and much like we were kind of going through each one and vote on all of them separately, because there's so many different pieces and parts.
I have no objection to that. Is everyone okay with dividing those? So we're talking about Policy 2520 right now, and I just made a motion to add the tiered system into the policy that will refer to the administrative guidelines.
I would second that.
Mrs. Payne seconds. Any discussion on that?
And just so I'm clear, that's going to appear after paragraph three?
Instructional materials by staff and parents before in addition, is what I was thinking.
I don't, whatever is easiest to include it in there, whatever makes sense for fluidity is fine with me. I just want to make sure that it is mentioned in there and it's part of our policy, not just part of administrative guidelines. The only other thing that I would mention about that is the classroom book collections. I would like to see it in policy as well, but I understand there's some more research that needs to be done on that. But I just want to state my position that I do think that needs to be included.
I think from what I understand, that stumbling block is all of those thousands of Media Center materials are cataloged and in a database. So that's a different, you know, they're barcoded and so forth, where the library collections in the classroom are leveled books, like a browsing collection, and they're not meant to leave the building necessarily, but there is not a mechanism to check those out. So not that there couldn't be to the future, but at this point, my understanding is it was not something that's sorted out yet.
Yeah, I understand that. I just wanted to state that, because I know, like, as you had just mentioned, they're for silent reading time, and I know there have been issues in the past with some controversial topics that are in that silent reading collection. I'm hopeful that we can work it in there eventually, since, you know, it looks like there needs to be some additional work.
I know we had spoke about adding some, I'd made some suggestions about administrative guidelines, and I know it's not our job to write administrative guidelines, but just some ways to-
But you can guide us that direction.
I was guiding to add some protections in place for those classroom libraries. And I don't know if you've had a chance to think about it.
Yeah, a lot of it's going to depend on what the teachers are able to do in the classrooms themselves. The one step we've taken since the meeting last Wednesday was to talk to our IT department a little bit and just kind of put that bug in their ear a little bit to figure out, okay, how might this work electronically? There's a lot that would go into that right now, but again, we haven't had a real opportunity to sit down and really kind of craft what that might look like just yet. I know there are some other ideas, you know. Do we do, again, another question in the annual update to opt out of the classroom libraries? That's an option. Can a student bring their own book from home for silent reading? That might be an option. But really, what I want to make sure that we do first before we make any of those selections is to really look at the logistics of the checkout process, to see if there's any possible way to do it similar to what we do with the school library systems. It seems a little cumbersome at first glance, but again, as we start to dig into things, sometimes things become a little bit easier. So if we get another month, month and a half or so here, I think that'll allow us to get a little bit more clarity on that, because then we can also engage our literacy committee and especially those elementary teachers on that literacy committee to kind of talk through how this might potentially work in the classrooms themselves. What I can do at this point is make sure within our administrative guidelines that we have everything spelled out that we need right now with some placeholder language for the classroom libraries also. So we'll have some of those conversations here in August when teachers get back.
And those administrative guidelines, those will be made available to the public, right?
Yeah. That manual, we hope to have public, we want to have it done before school starts. So we've been talking through with our directors on a weekly basis where we're at with some of that. I think we're close to getting a couple more chapters. Really, these policies tonight impact three different chapters of the administrative guidelines, too. So once we have those things kind of hammered out this evening, we'll be able to finalize those administrative guidelines and get those chapters to you guys, and then get the whole thing published here shortly. And again, those will appear. So when you guys start looking at this from the public as well, you know where you can go and look at policy itself. There's just going to be a little dropdown box where instead of the policy manual, you can click over and see the administrative guidelines. It's the same exact setup, just a different manual. And again, those administrative guidelines are just to try and spell out specifically how we're going to be going through and implementing the policies that are put in place. So it'll be a nice system when it's all done. So hopefully soon, definitely before school starts, though.
Mr. Heath, could I see your notes so we can get the wording exactly on that motion? So I can repeat it.
I have a couple comments. I'm glad to hear that we are able to do that. That, I think because in that survey, we did mention, to the community, would you be interested or would you be, you know, happy about if we had a policy? So that concerned me a little bit. So I'm happy to see that we're able to do that. In the spirit of that, you know, I really do feel that that keeping our sexual content policy is really important, and it adds an extra layer. And I think it's interesting to consider that. When we put that survey out, at the time, we did have, as Mrs. Payne said, we had a sexual content policy. So I feel like that influenced a lot of answers, you know. Knowing that you'll be notified if your kid is reading or taking home a book that's got explicit material or sexual content in it, you're going to be notified. Yeah, I feel, I'm not that concerned, because I'm going to be notified. So, and now for us to then pull the rug out from under, I feel like we can't, it just doesn't seem right. So if we could, you know, it doesn't cost us anything to keep it. We've already gone through it, because it's a current policy. It is an added layer. I know there's only a few books. Any new books that come up, you know, will obviously, it would add to that list if we have them. And in addition to that, I think doing what we do for CCP, which, you know, complies with state law, having some sort of permission slip ahead of time, I don't know if everybody's familiar, but if your child's going to take a CCP class, the post-secondary school that they're doing it with has to, that parent has to sign something saying that your child may come in contact with mature material, because it is a college class. So, and that's state law. So something along those lines. If we have some sort of disclaimer that says, you know, our sexual content policy is not foolproof, but it is an extra layer, your child still may come into contact with some mature material. We encourage you to consider that when making your decision on our two-tiered policy and whether you're going to give full access or partial access. I think that's something I can live with and that we can all make everybody happy. Thoughts?
Although, in terms of the two-tiered system, there's abundant resources that a parent can use to make a decision about any particular title. I think it, the same problem that we ran into before with why the sexual content issue, because it did not include materials in the thousands that had already been on the shelves, it was not ever feasible that you could go through each and every one, trying to create a list. I think your idea of a disclaimer that, remember, we're vetting our books. Our media specialist is using lean see to make selections. There are reviews of books available, and it's a relatively small collection and a very low number of circulation for students at the secondary level. So I don't see that as being necessary when we have the parental approval in place.
I think it's important to remember that most of us who are, this is a hot topic for us, we are going to make sure that we check and we research and we do our best to make sure that every title we get, because it just offers the title, is something that we want our kids looking at. But we have to be realistic. That's not the majority. A lot of people don't have time. They're not, a lot of people think that they trust the school, that certain things aren't going to be made accessible to their students. And so I feel like this is just us saying to our parents, it's a level of respect, really, to say, you know, it's not foolproof. We're not going to let you know, like, every single topic, because there is a large array of topics that are considered, you know, mature content to some, but not to others. But it's just another layer. Again, it's a small thing that we can do. It doesn't cost us anything, and, you know, it just gives peace of mind.
Although there is a cost anytime you're creating lists or going through additional books. Remember, with the new administrative guidelines, for all purchases, and there's nothing purchased this year, but for all future purchases, the list will go to the curriculum committee. It'll go to individual building principals for a second look, so that there's going to be multiple people in the district looking at all purchases before they're approved. So where is the cost? And, I mean, I think we have a total of 17 books right now?
It's not just time. It's having to go through the books. And, I mean, time is money.
Well, I'm not asking them to go through books. It's just what we have.
Right. But let me just finish, because I'm going to have to repeat a lot of the points that I made at the last meeting, because it sounds like they bear repeating. So the fact that the sexual content policy is a weak policy, that's just, it's inconsistent, unevenly applied. It only applies to some materials and not others. Some are grandfathered in, others are not. It can't apply to state-mandated materials. It's, we do have a list. We have a list of books that we've essentially blacklisted, and that does indeed open us up to litigation. And in fact, I'll take my notes from the March meeting, in which I cited a few lawsuits that are still moving forward, even though it's been a few months. Let's see, Penguin Random House and authors John Green and Jody Picco are suing Iowa for a new law that bans public school libraries and classrooms from having practically any book that depicts sexual activity. The lawsuit argues that the bans are unconstitutional and violate the First Amendment. In Pensacola, the writers' group Penn America, publisher Penguin Random House, and other authors and parents are suing Escambia County School District over its removal of books. And then, that one's moving forward as well. The judge said that they do have standing to pursue their claims under the First Amendment. And then another one, the other lawsuit that I mentioned back in March, is one from last fall in Michigan, where a judge dismissed a lawsuit against Rockford Public Schools brought by a community group that sought to ban 14 sexually explicit books from the school district's library. The judge ruled that, quote, "Plaintiffs cannot establish that a reasonable person would not find value in the identified works as a whole." So there is precedent, and this would be a cost. This is going to open us up to legal scrutiny and liability. So while we can't see the dollars and cents right now, these are real risks and real costs.
What about the lawsuits for parents suing for, because their child?
Can you show me some?
Did you look up any?
I actually, I have a point of clarification as well. So I know of those lawsuits that you're speaking of, and those are because they had completely censored them. We're not censoring anything. We're not blacklisting anything. We're simply notifying parents-
I quite disagree.
Sorry, I'm still talking. Of books that contain sexually explicit graphic materials. And let me read the definition in the sexual content policy, just so everybody's on the same page. There are some children in here, so I just want to give a minute in case any children want to leave, because it is a very specific definition in the policy. So our sexual content policy states, "For the purposes of this policy and those policies cross-referenced herein, sexual content shall be defined as any written language or images, pictures, photographs, drawings, movies, or other visual depictions that includes but are not limited to sexual intercourse, masturbation, sadism, masochism, bestiality, fellatio, cunnilingus, pedophilia, molestation, rape, or incest." I beg to differ that the majority of parents and community members support not being notified of those things in materials that their children are going to read. Also, our attorney did look over this, and it was a unanimous vote to pass it. So-
Right. But time has passed since then.
I'm still speaking. I'm sorry. I'm still speaking. I let you speak. It's my turn now. So our attorney wouldn't have approved of this policy that we worked very hard on to ensure that our public is aware, and it shows transparency and creates trust. We had a survey done prior to removal of this policy. It's simply an added layer. I don't think it should be this hard to retain something that could potentially protect students and create trust for their parents against sexually explicit graphic materials.
These lawsuits were filed and are moving forward after that policy was written. That's all I want to say.
Those are censorship, though. This is not censorship.
It's literally the same situation. It's the same situ, I just-
We're not saying nobody can read it. We're saying just a notification that this content is in there.
Right.
Okay. I have some comments on this, too. You know, I voted for the sexual content policy, and I fully supported it. I did. And we have used it for a year. And we really have not come any closer to resolving the issue. It hasn't helped. It simply hasn't helped. In that time, I've had increasing concerns about the policy, things that didn't occur to me at the time. We talked a lot about, when we were creating the policy, we talked a lot about how books would end up on this list. And then if they're on the list and a child goes to take out the book, then the parent is notified. And it is so restrictive. It's not useful. It's not feasible. not useful, it's, it's not feasible to expand and to shut down the library, and have someone reading every single book to see if they fit any sexual content. It is not, it's not practical to use one definition, because my definition of sexual content may be very different from Mrs. Payne's definition of sexual content. And I know we have words in there, but we also have some general statements after that. So, and I would even say that sexual content is different based on your age. You know, what you would determine as sexual content for a high school student versus an elementary student, very different things. So, we are creating a list of books, which we know could put us at legal risk, we have seen lawsuits where that is happening. But, right now, I asked Mr. Heath, tell me about this list. There are eighteen books on the list, eighteen. So, in a year, we've identified eighteen books. If I'm a parent, and I believe that you are notifying me when sexual content, when my child checks out sexual content, and we only have eighteen books on that list, that's ridiculous, it's a false sense of security. And we all know that sexual content can be in many books that I wouldn't think most people think are harmful. Grapes of Wrath, To Kill a Mockingbird, Of Mice and Men, Scarlet Letter, Good Earth, To Whom the Bell Tolls, The Sun Also Rises. None of these books are on the list. They have sexual content. It is not feasible for us to create a list, it's a false sense of security, and it's really so much better for us to say, you know what, we are going to tell you whatever book your child chooses. If your child's checking out a book, we're notifying you. We want parents to partner with us, please be involved, please. Your child is checking out a book, if you are concerned, if you feel that your child is sensitive, please look up the book, be sensitive to what your child is sensitive to, and partner with us to just research the book, put in the work.
I just have one other comment.
I, I want to clarify, wait, I keep hearing that that's weak policy, but I just want to verify and kind of just revisit. The only reason it's weak policy is because it was voted down to remove sexually explicit books from our, our libraries, that wasn't board-supported by Mrs. Cook or Mrs. Jessling, and we had, kind of all came to a compromise that, okay, we're not going to get rid of any books, we're just going to go ahead and flag books if they include sexually explicit materials. So it's only weak because of that, there's, there was, that's what we came up with, because nobody agreed to set a harsher policy. Also, having a policy is, what's worse than a weak policy is having no policy. And I think that this policy just is an added layer, I don't understand the fight to remove an added layer for parents. It, all it's going to show is the community that we don't have a standard for sexually explicit materials. And it's, it's a poor decision, I think it's unwise, and I think, think it sends the wrong message to the community.
Mrs. Payne, I did vote down, I did vote down removing books, because it would set us up for a lawsuit, as, as we just heard. It would not give parental rights. And a lot of these books that you're talking about are books that are tested for, for curriculum, they're tested in AP, and your definition of explicit, you couldn't give one. You couldn't give a definition that we could be legally defensible, and what would draw the line between explicit or obscene, we danced around it for a long time. The reason that we didn't settle with that is because we couldn't define it, so we didn't have a barometer of what was explicit or obscene, and we didn't want to set our district up for lawsuits. So, I stood behind this policy, but now we have something better. We are protecting people because they will know what their child is checking out. We all know this, this isn't taking something away, this is giving them something so much more, and it's on every single book, so if there are any concerns, if your child is sensitive to an issue, you can be aware of what they are reading, and you can even say, no, no, they cannot leave the, they cannot leave the building with that book until my signature is on a page. It, it's so strong, and it's so much better than what we have, to put ourselves up to possible lawsuits, and to have incomplete lists, having eighteen books on the list, it's not doing anything, let's not pretend it is. And on top of it, we have a survey that says that seventy-five percent of people have no concern or low concern about the books, and we are putting ourselves at risk for, for being not transparent to parents, because our list isn't complete.
Okay, I, I'd like to say something, a couple of things. One, we keep talking about lawsuits, but I, I don't think our attorney would have given us blessing, we've had it since August, so that argument just doesn't, just doesn't...
I'm sorry, just, the public keeps speaking, can we gavel when they speak over, please?
Maybe when they clap, too.
So, so we just have to clarify that, we wouldn't have it as a policy if it was putting us at liability for a lawsuit, so, number one. And, and number, when we talk about the survey, you can, you, if you're going to mention the survey results, you have to mention the fact that, when people took it, we, they were taking it knowing we have a sexual content policy in place. So, you know, you remove that and ask the question, you're going to get a different answer. Another thing is you talk about false sense of security. Our district just went through what is every parent's nightmare, and having an elementary teacher arrested for soliciting a minor. So I think that any extra added layer of, of security for our parents is worth it. And finally, with Ed Choice around, and we see, I just heard alarming numbers of a local private school in Mener, who, it's, they're, they're busting at the seams now, we have competition, and we, we, it's not fair, somebody, a public speaker mentioned that pro-public school choices, why is it that public school kids don't get to have, go to a school where there's a nice moral compass? Why? It's not a private school thing, it should be a nonpartisan thing. So, you know, we have to compete with private schools and with homeschooling, and again, this is just silly that we're going back and forth. If we're, if you're going to insist on, on not doing that, we have to at least notify parents that their child, yes, here's all the titles, if you choose to, you know, opt into this, but there is a possibility that you're going to, your child, you may miss something, you may drop the ball, you may not see the, you know, the permission slip, your child might see something, that's with mature content. So that's where I draw the line on that. We can keep going back and forth, but again, it's, it's a simple thing that we can do to, to please everybody. It doesn't hurt anybody by, by keeping it.
Is there any more discussion on the motion that's on the table? And our motion that's on the table is to, it's up behind me on the screen, so it is to add to Policy 2520, that the library, the Library Media Center checkout procedures, the procedures will be followed in the Library Media Center material checkout process, and then listing the open access and the reserved access. So in the annual update, parents would select the Library Media Center access for their student. So because we have this motion on the table, I'm not shutting down discussion for the rest of the policy, but we have a motion, and we have a second on the table to add this to the policy. Is there any more discussion on just this piece here? Okay. Mr. Wade, could you call the roll?
(inaudible)
My motion, Mrs. Payne seconded. Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Apolo?
Yes.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
So the motion to amend, as shown behind me, has been approved five-zero. Mr. Heath, if you could send that to me, so I can get it in the minutes correctly?
I got it.
Thank you.
Okay, so, any more continued discussion about Policy 2520 before we call the roll on this?
So, I would like to see if we, I know we had mentioned this earlier, but divide the question to, I want to vote on the sexual content policy separately, the removal of that, I, that's really important to me, I don't want to be voting for the removal of that, but I fully support this. So, are we able to divide that question into two parts?
We don't have that on our agenda, we're not voting on removing the sexual content policy, we're voting on, on our new policy 2520, and at the last meeting you asked to amend, and we voted that down.
So, we, just for clarification, we only need then one vote to remove a policy? Is that true? Because we only voted once to, to remove that.
No, we voted once to amend, it is currently our current policy. So if we are voting, we're voting today to replace.
The motion on the floor last week was to move it up, to vote on it today, right?
Yeah, it was a motion to move to a second reading of Option A, which includes the removal of the sexual content policy.
And didn't you also move to, to amend, to add the sexual content policy? And we voted...
I voted to retain it.
To retain it. And so we've already voted on that, so, so now we're moved, we're forward on this 2520 for the second, the second reading, as it stands.
So, but, so to remove a policy, you only need one, one vote?
No.
I'm very, this doesn't make sense to me.
It'll be removed with a vote today.
Right, that's why I'm saying that I would like to separate that, I don't want to vote yes to remove the sexual content policy, and I think Ms. Apolo is with me, but I would like to support this, this change, this specific change.
You could get that noted in the comments, because you're not, I mean, because by, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the, by voting yes on this policy, you're inherently voting to remove the other one? However, based on the minutes that I have up from last meeting, we voted on a motion to retain sexual content and retain book donations, which failed two to three.
But what was the other motion that she, Ms. Marchaza, brought up?
The vote to bring it to, to bring Option A to this meeting.
Right. And then Option A showed the sexual content, the point oh two, one oh two and oh three.
But it was crossed out.
It was, it was eliminated.
Which we have in the minutes now, as we showed on the screen, that all of those policies in the new 2520 are eliminated as a result.
Right. This, this is just exactly why we shouldn't have so much business at a special meeting without having exactly what we're going to be voting on, voting on at a special meeting, but I'll save that for later. So, for clarification then, what we're going to be voting on does include the removal of the sexual content policy?
What we are voting on is a new, is a new policy, 2520, and it does not include the sexual content policy.
It never did.
It never did.
Right, so that's...
So we didn't remove it, it never, it never included it. We are voting to substitute this policy for what our current is.
Essentially, removing the sexual content policy.
It will remove it, if, if we're...
So would I, just for the purpose of this meeting today, if I motioned to retain the sexual content policy, and it's seconded, that would be on the record then, that...
But didn't we already do this?
Yeah, we already did that.
That was already done. That was done at the last meeting.
I don't like how it's lumped in, because I don't want to vote on, I don't want to vote to remove the sexual content policy, but I support this change.
So you, you'd have to vote no? I mean, as much, I mean, I understand what you're saying, I mean, I mean...
I think we need full clarification, that the vote today is removing the sexual content policy.
The policy that's being voted on today does not include the sexual content policy, so inherently by voting in support of this, you would be voting for removing the sexual content policy. So if you do not want to vote for the sexual content policy to be removed, I would not vote yes for this policy.
And the vote that we just did to amend it would reflect that we support that piece, but not the rest of the changes?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to touch on what Rose had mentioned about the survey results, I echo what she had stated. Also, in the survey, fifteen percent was very concerned, ten percent were concerned, and eight percent were unsure. We don't know what that eight percent is, you know, because the other questions were, the other respondents said they were not at all concerned, or not very concerned. Forty-nine percent said not at all, eighteen said not very concerned. So while we keep saying twenty-five percent, I don't know where those, you know, other ten percent lies. If you add them in, that makes, you know, that a larger concern.
The good thing, though, is there will be the two-tiered policy, which has been formalized, so that essentially, every parent or guardian makes the choice for their student. Whatever their belief system is, whatever their, the needs of their youngster might be, they're able to honor that, and, you know, the magic of the internet will give you tons of information about any title, so I don't think it would be something that would be burdensome to look up a book or two once a week.
I, I have to echo those comments. I think that we should be concerned about everyone's comfort level. Everyone. I, I am concerned about the twenty-five percent that are concerned. That is why I was creating policy. And, and when I first wrote this, it was for policy, so I'm glad it's policy. This is, this is a comfort level, this is full parent control. So, I, I'm very happy that we're doing this today.
If the intention was for it to be in policy, how come it wasn't included prior to me announcing it today?
Well, I've had many discussions with Mr. Heath about it, and when we first wrote it, it was written as policy. It, remember, we had old meetings where we were talking about it as policy, and then we decided to save it for these special meetings and talk about everything together, but it was initially written as policy. And I didn't like how specific it was written, when it was written, because I didn't feel like it allowed for flexibility, and the specific flexibility that I'm talking about here is if we were to have, say, an app or a different communication system other than this paper system, it would have to be a change in policy to change how we are communicating with the parents. Right now, we don't have anything that would be an, an easy, yes, you're allowed to bring this book home, and so it's written as a paper system, but hopefully that would change. And that was a reason that Mr. Heath suggested, hey, let's put this in administrative guidelines, so that if this flexibility happened, we would be able to easily pivot on that. And at this point, because of the survey with the tiered system, and the results of how people felt about the tiered system, I thought, well, we could do it in administrative guidelines, and administrative guideline is something that means it will happen. And we can always bolster it into policy, when we've solidified processes, but I have no problem with having it in policy, it was always my intention, it's how I presented it when I presented the stoplight system. So, I, I'm happy to move forward with this.
I'm glad we have that added layer, I think it's a, a good addition. I know Rose and I had met with Mr. Heath prior to you proposing the stoplight situation, and this is similar to what we were kind of talking about as well. So I, I do support that, I do not support the removal of the sexual content policy, I think we need a standard, I've reiterated that a million times. So, and I do think it's legally defensible, because I did consult our attorney many times when we were going through that process, to come up with a definition, and it wouldn't have been proposed if we couldn't defend it. So, I understand what you're saying, but, but it is defensible, otherwise we wouldn't have had it. So, I just think it's an added layer of protection, I think it's unwise to remove that added layer, and I think it sends a negative message. But the rest of it, I do support the two-tiered system.
I echo your comments. Mr. Heath, is it something that you can consider to have this permission slip, similar to the CCP permission slip that we can have parents sign upon making their decision on how they're going to, which tier they're going to sign their parents, their kids up for?
Could you, Rose, do you have something written up that you could, possibly could be, propose it in the policy, or would it be more of a...
I just have what, like, what Lake Lakeland has, it just, it just lets parents know that if your, if your child, before they can actually enroll in the CCP, they have to sign acknowledging that the CCP program may include mature subject matters or materials, including those of a graphic, explicit, violent, or sexual nature that will not be modified based upon, you know, that's the CCP enrollment, regardless of where the course instruction occurs. So it's some, something along those lines, saying that, I mean, that might be, that's geared toward college level, but something of those, just, just, I mean, that's, that releases us of a little bit of liability, too, because we're not paid, going through every book, but it also, like, alerts, because I'm telling you, a lot of parents are not... But it also like alerts, because I'm telling you, a lot of parents are not aware that it's even allowed, that we even would have some of these things, so.
But Mrs. Ioplo, that statement that you just read is really informing parents that they don't have a right to say their child can't read it. And it also is saying that the parent doesn't have a right because you're enrolling in a college class.
Well, that's just an example because obviously that's for college.
Sure, but that's what you're using as.
Well, we, we can, we can tweak it to.
And then it's also stating that they couldn't ask for an alternate material, but that isn't true. Because in, in our district, you could ask for an alternate material and you can ask to review it, and you could even say, no, my child can't take it home with them. So I don't understand if you're, if you are given the notification that says you are going to be told your child's taking home a book and you can opt into restricted access, like I will give permission, aren't you inherently, like, you know that you are reviewing?
Is that when, the statement you're reading that we're going to be providing for that tiered, two-tiered system, are you giving examples to what, or just in general saying when, when your kid takes out a book, we'll give you the titles? And that might be a place to put it, something like?
So you're talking about before they, during like the, you pick this one or this one? It would say, just, you know.
It is your responsibility to.
That materials may contain controversial topics or be sexually explicit.
Aren't we getting into the administrative guidelines content at this point?
I'm fine if it's an administrative guideline.
Yeah, she's, I think what.
I just, I just want to caution us because we just said, you know, having sort of this loose framework up here, built into policy was wise, but that we should leave the details to the administrative guidelines, which we're not responsible for creating.
I think what she's saying is a disclaimer, which makes sense to have it in policy.
I hear you.
So that, you know, it just, it basically says, hey, there may be sexual content, there may be controversial topics, or something might be sexually explicit. So that parents who may not know that we may have books like that.
I hear what you're saying and I understand what, what a disclaimer is. What I'm saying is it doesn't belong in policy and policy is our job.
I, I beg to differ. I think it definitely belongs in policy.
I disagree.
Okay.
Couldn't that just be a statement?
The language you're proposing would be on the, the approval slip that is going to be sent?
No, it would be, you're, you're going to, because the idea of the two-tiered system is that every parent is going to choose either full access or approval, correct? So somewhere there. So prior to them, you know, on the same form that they're going to pick. So prior to them actually making that selection, just a disclaimer.
In the annual update that you're doing digitally, where you're going to choose open access and reserved access, would that be a place that in the administrative guidelines, it would say, we're adding a disclaimer to let parents know that in our media center collections, there could be some mature content? Just like an FYI?
I'm not sure that that would be accurate for an elementary student.
Not elementary.
I mean, I'm sure it isn't accurate for an elementary student. We're talking about, we have 18 books right now that we have blacklisted and they are all in the high school. That's why.
But this, this would cover that, but it would also cover any, anything that might be considered a trigger for a kid.
Again, I think this is, if it's, we're talking about administrative guidelines here and that is Mr. Heath's domain, not ours.
That's why I'm asking him if he would consider that.
If you can send me the language, we'll look at it when we're developing what, because again, just to be clear in this first, this first year, because the annual update is already done, we'll, we'll have to figure out a different procedure to follow here. So I know we just put that in policy that it's around the annual update, but it's going to look a little different this first year. Probably more of a Google form or, you know, email response type system. But we'll, we'll figure that piece out. The, the, the language for that in the annual update has not been identified yet. So, you know, obviously, we can consider some of the, the suggestions that you guys share with us as well. So again, Ms. Ioplo, if you'd like to share that with me, that can be something that we can take a look at as we're developing those guidelines.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we now have a motion and a second on the table to approve policy 2520 with the amendment that is behind me.
We don't.
We do not have a motion on this? Do I have a motion?
Our motion?
Yeah, because the motion we have on the table, yeah, the motion that we have on the table, just to be clear.
Because we didn't have the amendment yet.
Yeah, it was to approve the, all the policies. But then, there is another motion that we never finished. Just to be clear, Annie made a motion to vote on them.
To divide the question.
Oh.
Which you had stated, you support the division of the question, but we never, we just kind of asked.
So we have a motion to, I thought we could, I thought we couldn't after we explained, but let's vote on it. We, we have a motion to divide the, to divide separately if we are eliminating the sexual content.
No, that wasn't.
We discussed that one.
Yeah, that one's, that one's dead.
Which one are, what are we?
Sorry, you said to divide 2520, 9130, 7230.
The motion to divide the question is, is to divide all the different policies that we're voting on separately so that we can vote on them separately.
Oh.
But at this point, if, if the sexual content is already lumped in and there's no way to divide that, I'm okay with voting on everything and just keep going down and let's talk about the rest.
Okay. Just go back.
I'd like to make a motion to divide 2520, 7230, and 9130 separately. So we can move forward here.
We're not, we're not doing that.
Ms. Payne said she doesn't need that.
She's withdrawing it.
Yeah, my concern was mainly the sexual content policy, but if we're, if there's no way to remove that, no need to divide it.
So then we do have a motion on the table. Go back to your original point.
All right.
The motion is to approve all of the policies. And that was motioned by Ms. Marchesa, seconded by Mrs. Jessling. We've had a ton of discussion and other motions in between. And at some point, we need to vote.
So we need to go over the gift grants and.
Okay, well, wait, so we have a motion on the table to approve policy 2520 with the amendment, policy 7230, and policy 9130. And we have a second for Ms. Jessling.
So now we have discussion and everything.
And more discussion.
Well, just on the 7230.
Are we done with policy 2520 discussion? Can we close that discussion? All right, so is there any discussion on policy 7230?
I have a question, actually, it's just for, for my own purposes, because I wasn't sure. The addition says no gifts or donations of library slash media materials shall be accepted. But in the other, other areas of, I think it's 2520 or maybe, maybe later, we refer to instructional materials. So should we replace library media materials with instructional materials? I know it's a semantics thing, but does that make sense?
We in 7230 now?
Yeah, in 7230, that second paragraph, just the addition.
Oh, we had that, that question. And again, what we've tried to do is clarify that in the administrative guideline. So the, the one addition that we've played around with in the administrative guideline then is that it says, in addition, a gift or donation must not, and then it lists like seven different things.
Oh, okay.
And the last one on there says, be a book or material to be included in the classroom or library media center collections. So it clarifies that there.
Okay, so that's in the AG somewhere then?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I had one, I think it might have been in the administrative guidelines where it just looks like something was left out, but I can't, I don't, I have to check if it was the gifts and grants. But 70, yeah, 7230 had like letter G, but it was blank.
It's updated now, so if you take a look at it again, it's, it's included in there. And that's the language that I just read. So be a book or material to be included in the classroom or library media center collections.
Okay.
So this is just for clarification for everybody. This is saying no gifts or donations of library media materials shall be accepted. It gets rid of the book donations, which I'll just echo what I said at the special meeting. I think a lot of us are having to do that. But I don't, I don't think we should get rid of donations. I think right now, until we fix our policy and we become compliant with balancing our book collection, I think it's essential that we do, we've had several people from all different political spectrums donate books. And I have no, no problem voting on those books like our policy says. I think it would just help balance. I think it would help show that we are not, you know, leaning only one way. I think it would really be a statement to the community. And I have no problem in the future revisiting this and adding that language in there once it is balanced. But I think it's, again, not wise to make that decision right now, until we have a balanced collection.
I agree. I think allowing donation opportunities creates accountability, transparency, and trust with the community, which we desperately need to build on. And removing this tells the taxpayers that we don't value their input, and that's not true. And again, it's just a, it's just an opportunity to put, to donate books. It doesn't mean it's going to get in, so.
I think it's ill-advised, and the reason is the following. That curating a collection for a media center, it means creating a thoughtful balance of materials that offer the best use of space, meet the curricular needs and student interest in each building. Our media specialist orders through the library consortium, Leem C. She's following the administrative guidelines outlined by Mr. Heath, and those are those new ones that he's put together. Requests for items on the list she compiles are made by the six library clerks working throughout the district. All items have a final approval process by the curriculum department and each building administrator. Book donations are not accepted by public libraries because of the complexities they present. To my knowledge, our district has never accepted donations to our media centers. When materials are ordered, a wholesale vendor like Baker &amp; Taylor is used. Materials are purchased at a discount, are labeled for circulation, and the marked records are uploaded to the library database. There is no other central processing of materials at the district level. There once was, but that's been gone for some 20 years. As far as balancing viewpoints for student research, students have had access to six database services, which resulted in retrieval of database, or retrieval of more than 35,000 articles just in the 23-24 school year. Those include the Virtual Reference Library, the Literature Resource Center, Opposing Viewpoints, High School in Context, Global Issues, and the Points of View Reference Center, the last of which is part of Info Ohio and is used at both the high school and the middle school level. So I think continuing our practice of not including donations is the sensible choice in this case because there have been for a long time, that opposing viewpoint series, now that's at least 40 or 50 years back that I can remember, in the public library. So that, that's a staple of research that gives timely and multifaceted views on any topic that might be researched, whether it's social issues, government issues, and the whole gamut. So I think our robust use of those databases is an excellent resource and shows how well embedded that is in the resources that our students have at their fingertips.
You had mentioned Baker &amp; Taylor database. I just pulled it up online just to see, because some of these things do lean one way. And Baker &amp; Taylor have a diversity and inclusion catalog for librarians to choose from. So just, I do think, you know, people have bias, even organizations have bias. And I think that with our new process, we surely will be doing a better job of balancing them. But because some of the challenges that we've experienced are not, the collections that we have do not currently, I haven't been given at least a, a title that shows the opposing viewpoint in some of those challenged books. I just think that we should retain it for the time being, look over some of the materials we've received from both ends of the perspective, the, both perspectives, and, and make that decision as a board. I have no problem voting on, on books.
I think it's another distraction from the work that the woman is already doing. I, I think you'll end up with a big back and forth. What's the point of that? I'm, I'm satisfied that in terms of research opportunities that we offer a robust complement of good, high-quality databases. And that's generally what students are using, whether they're at the high school level, middle school level, or certainly at the college or university level. So their familiarity with that is, is perfect. And it also doesn't solve the issue of processing and space. And the other piece that the librarian mentioned to me, which is we've always worked hard to balance resources across the district. We have various aspects of our community. There are some differences in socioeconomic levels. You can't have one building has this, one, one building doesn't get anything. So I think utilizing our own district resources, if somebody has, you know, a suggestion, they're, they're welcome to offer that to their, their child's principal for a suggestion of something. But the book ordering process is well-established. We get through Baker &amp; Taylor, they're a wholesaler like Ingram, so like Amazon. But it's designed for libraries and they offer a deep discount. We have a, an institutional account. So it might be 20, 30, 40% off. So you're getting books at a, a discount. If there are library additions available for things that are used more strenuously, like a state book, for example, the binding is going to be different than it would be for a trade paperback or something that's good for one or two uses and starts to fall apart. So I just think the whole donations thing, there's a reason why the public libraries don't do it. We never have. I don't see a reason to make a change.
Mr. Heath, could you just speak to what is your plan to even out the book collection with some of those specific challenges that we've received, especially for elementary school? What is your concrete plan to address that and make sure that there's balance? And do you feel like there is need for balance?
Yeah, I, we still haven't had an opportunity to sit down and go through the entire collection, so that's going to be probably process number one. As Ginny mentioned, we've got about 34,000 books that we would have to review, which may take some time. But I think the big piece is, and again, I think that's why we asked for some of those key topics that, that we were looking for balance from at our last meeting. Those would be some of those topics that we would be looking at specifically first and foremost as we review. Our literacy council, which is made up of our curriculum directors, media specialists, principals, and, and our teaching staff, will, will be tasked with working through that process and, and generating a report for us. Obviously, anything that we would be adding to the collection to balance things out would be running through that council as well. That's really the sole purpose for those, for those councils, just to make sure that we, we have alignment across the board, that we're following our policies and that we, that we're making sure that we're doing what's in the best interest of the kids. So once that committee comes back together, that council comes back together here in the fall, that'll be topic number one on the, the first agenda for that council this year.
And will that also include, because I know the main, I know we had the one book challenge for K through five that was part of the actual library, but I know several of the other challenges we've received in the past, like the Colin Kaepernick book, those are part of the library, the in-classroom library.
Classroom library.
Would that review include those as well?
That one's a, it's a little bit more of a challenge because that's already been board-approved, that entire classroom library collection. You know, could it go, go through the review process and that we now have in place with that review process committee? Sure. Because I believe that, that Colin Kaepernick book actually went through committee when we, when we did the review for that one. So that's probably where that would live at this point.
I think the committee is helpful. I know with the Colin Kaepernick book, it was not a unanimous decision to retain the book. I think it was a six to four decision where four teachers or staff members, administrative staff members voted to, thinking it would, it should be removed. So I do like the committee idea.
No, my opinion on the book donations, for what it's worth, is we've had books donated recently from, with both liberal values and conservative values, and we haven't accepted any of them. They have, they have sat on Mr. Heath's desk. We haven't brought them forward. We're, we're not just accepting. They have sat on Mr. Heath's desk. We haven't brought them forward. We're not just accepting one-sided donations. We are not accepting any donations. We haven't been accepting any donations, even though our policy had room for it. And this is why we're coming together now. After looking at what the public library does, they don't accept donations for just this reason. They have librarians that curate their collection. They only accept donations that would go into the little local library, the little mini libraries, or they would accept donations to be able to sell at a book sale, but to raise money, but not to shelf on their books. And they do that because their librarians are the experts to curate the collection. I don't believe a board of education needs to curate a library collection. And if we're accepting donations in the sense of to balance a collection, we don't have that overarching view of what the collection is. We're seeing like little snippets. This is the job of the librarians. We need to stay out of the politics of which books are coming in and which books aren't, and we need to give that to the professionals. I don't think that we should be curating a collection. So I am in favor of this adjustment to this policy.
I completely agree, and that is more or less what I said at our last meeting, that, you know, if there are concerns about political leanings, then why not leave it to the experts? It makes complete sense to me. I know that those experts are going to give equal weight to positions that are, you know, supported by facts, supported by empirical evidence, supported by data, and, you know, truly, that's the same thing we teach our students to do in their own work, when we ask them to create research papers or projects. So I know that that is what they'll do. I trust them to do it, and I'm good with the policy as it's written.
All right. We've all had a chance to speak about policy 7230. Are we ready for discussion?
I just have one more comment, then we can vote.
Of course.
I just find it interesting that we keep going to emulate Menor Public Library standards, but then we don't copy their standards when it comes to sexual content.
Good point.
I actually think that's inaccurate.
I'm sorry?
I said, I think that that is inaccurate.
It is, because when the Bluestye was challenged, you can't take our card for the Menor Public Library and go and check that book out. You have to have a specific card that the Menor Public Library has your adult parent sign for you, saying you can have access to any materials. We don't do that. But yet, we had the Bluestye here in our library for access, but yet you couldn't take our library card and go to the Menor Public Library and check it out.
To be clear, that's only the library card that are the Menor School library cards. But if my child has their own library card, not a Menor Schools library card, they indeed can go check out.
No, right. At the Menor Public Library, if you walk, if your minor child walks in, they can't check, they get a different type of card unless a parent or guardian comes in and signs it off.
That's not what I understood to be the case, but nobody here works at the library, so I don't think that we should really delve any deeply.
Maybe I did sign off, because I know that my child don't have, they don't have restrictions, they don't have the restricted access.
You must have signed then. Yeah, there's a disclaimer. It's the normal library card, but you have to sign off that you're okay with your child, most like the disclaimer that Ms. Iapolo was stating for the policy. You sign off on that when you get a library card. I had spoken of this when we did the Bluestye challenge, because I reached out to the Menor Public Library for a bunch of different titles that would accomplish the same task, but not have the sexually explicit materials in it. And that was one of the questions that I had written to the library director for verification. So you are correct, like you can go get a card, but you do have to sign off for your kid.
So to your point, though, that's exactly what we're doing. Because with the two-tiered access, with the two-tiered access, I'm saying, I'm deciding, my child can check out whatever. You're going to tell me what they're checking out, just like the public library does. Or no, my child has restricted access. So we're doing the exact same thing that the public library is doing.
But they have a disclaimer. I think that's to your point. That's what they were stating.
Yeah. Okay. Any more comments for 7230, which is book donation? All right. Comments for policy 9130. This is our public complaints.
To be clear, this is the challenge process, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
And so this brings all of our challenges under one policy. So this would be challenges for professional staff members, administrators, superintendent, treasurer, classified staff, district service operations, educational program, and instructional materials. And as we talked about earlier, instructional materials is all encompassing. Any comments on that?
Just want to clarify that the major change with this one is not just the location. I mean, so if somebody were to want to challenge a material, the process from their end would look essentially the same, right?
Correct, because we still have that one form that would be used for any challenge.
The only difference, too, then, would be you would not be involved. This is up to the committee to handle, right?
Right. So in the past, we've had different procedures for instructional material challenges, supplementary material challenges, and library media center material challenges. This would take everything to committee.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Heath, do you know what's on the form? Because I know the last person who challenged said that the form didn't really match what her challenge was for the library book. What's on that actual form? Or at least, can you just take a look at it and make sure it matches this?
Yeah, because anytime we make an adjustment to policy, if there's a related form to it, that's one of the things that we'll have to make sure shifts as well. So if there's some clarifying language that we need to include in there, we certainly will.
Okay. Any more discussion? So we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve policy 2520 with the amendment, policy 7230, and policy 9130. Please call the roll.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
No.
Ms. Payne.
No.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 3-2.
All right. Next, we have the legislative report. Ms. Marchaza.
Thank you. I've got a present, uh-oh, some slides. I'll just go ahead and get started while you're, oh, there we go. So before we get to the slides, just to give some quick updates from the Ohio Department of Education workforce, one, they've got some proposed rules open for public comment. So you're welcome to go there, check out their site, and log your public comments there on those rules. They're around standards for a couple of scholarship programs and whether they should be accessed by virtual means. Now, I wanted to talk about this program, and actually have for some time, because I get a lot of questions about it. I get a lot of, you know, how does this affect minor schools, public schools in particular? And of course, there's a lot of news going around about this topic. So I figured it was a good time, it's sort of sleepy summer, and it would be a good time to touch base on it, especially because the Ohio Department of Education workforce just released a lot of data on the program. And so for context, the Ed Choice voucher program was created in the 1990s in Cleveland as a way to support families with lower incomes who wanted to send their students to better-performing schools. But last year, the Ohio Legislature expanded the program by removing income limits and opening the program up to families with higher incomes, and they removed some other restrictions as well. And that really, and that's House Bill 33, it was part of the Ohio budget bill in 2023. And so that expanded the program substantially, and really, we saw an explosion of vouchers over the last year. The explosion itself resulted in an enormous increase in the number of vouchers for students attending non-public, usually private, schools. And the numbers were just released by the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. Ohio awarded about 130,000 vouchers just last year, just this past year, which is more than double the previous year's number. We can go to the next slide. Thank you very much. So you, oop, nope, sorry, one back. There you go. Thank you. So this is from the State House News Bureau. You can see this obvious explosion that occurred just last year with the expansion of the program. So of the 15 Northeast Ohio school districts that saw the biggest surge, we'll go to that next slide now. Nope, I'm sorry, back up one more for me to the, there it is, thank you. So here's, this isn't not all of the schools that received vouchers. This is actually just one page of the report, but it shows the growth by amount. So this is a lot of data I see, but you can see in this third column from the left, the growth by percentage of vouchers that were distributed. So at the top of the list, you see, you know, Avon Local, 6,150% increase in vouchers, Kenston, Bay Village, Independence, Hudson, and so on. Menor is kind of in the middle of this list here, which I've highlighted for you. But essentially, what you should remember is that, you know, about 46,000 of these vouchers went to families in Northeast Ohio, and about half went to districts that are coded suburban or wealthy suburban schools. Menor is one of those schools, as Mr. Wade has told us before, that is considered to be quote-unquote wealthy, according to the state. So all of the, out of the 15 Northeast Ohio school districts that saw the biggest surge of voucher use this year, all but three have five-star ratings on Ohio's annual report card rating. Chardon, Olmsted Falls, and Columbia local school districts each have 4.5-star district ratings. And so this, all of this is coming from, again, the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. And so this data was just released at the end of the school year, so last month in June. Now, Menor, you can see here, we've had a 789% increase in voucher use. So you can see in FY fiscal year '23, we were at 73, and just this past year, it was 649. And this report, I think, was pulled a couple weeks ago. It actually might be a little bit higher than what you see here. All right, keep going forward if you could. All right. So in Menor in particular, this just sort of lays it out visually. I know folks love their visuals. I am one of those folks. So again, 789% increase. And it's really interesting, when you start to break down the numbers, which you can do on the website, anyone can go there and check out this data, of those 649 families, 80 have low incomes, 569 do not have low incomes. And a lot of people are concerned about this, because that was the whole point of the program when it was created in the 90s. The Ed Choice voucher program just no longer serves its original purpose. So that is definitely a concern for a lot of folks. Let's move forward another slide. So the other interesting thing, and this is another big concern a lot of folks have, is that while we're seeing this explosion in vouchers, these are our numbers, Menor-specific numbers, for the change in, you know, disenrollment from public to private or homeschool. So you can see we've remained relatively flat. Folks who chose to homeschool their children in just this past year, 174 were identified, and for private school, 669. So you can see that 669 is very similar to the number of vouchers that have been distributed in Menor. Now, what does this mean? You know, what does this mean for us? What does it mean for Menor Public Schools? I think, you know, when we compare these side by side, we can see why a lot of folks do have concerns about it. But basically, to summarize, the majority of students receiving Ed Choice vouchers already have been attending private schools, right? So we're not seeing a big influx of folks leaving our district, taking those vouchers, and enrolling in private schools. So that kind of was, I think, the philosophy, part in part, behind that program, but that's not actually what's happening. The state is, this is very important for us, the state is, on average, spending more on private school students than on public school students. So that's a big concern for us. Menor Public Schools, we receive, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it's about $1,500 from the state per student each year. Is that roughly correct, between $1,000 and $1,500?
Yeah, I'd say that's pretty accurate. I think it's in between there somewhere, actually, but close enough.
Right. So the per pupil cost, in other words, what it should cost to teach a student, as defined by the Fair School Funding Plan, is about a little over $8,000. But the average voucher value is actually $5,500. So in other words, kids who are attending private schools are getting more funding from the state than we are getting here in public schools. So just to sort of summarize, and by the way, it's even higher for kids in high school. The voucher expenditure per student is about $8,400. So it's not really easy to see how this hits our bottom line today in terms of, you know, dollars and cents, but it is clear that it eventually will. And as public school board members, it's really important that we know that, and that we share that information with our taxpayers, especially because the less funding we get from the state, of course, that's more funding that we're going to have to find from local sources, that is to say, property taxes. So really important for us to be aware of this development, to keep an eye on it, and understand what it means for us as a public school district. So that's it for my slides. Thank you very much. And I'll turn to our State House updates, because there are a lot of them. The General Assembly met at the end of June, right before they recessed for the summer. They sent 29 bills to Governor Dwyane, and several of those were education-related. He only signed one of the 29 so far that were sent to him. Many of these bills, they were, for lack of a better way of saying it, they're sort of Frankenstein bills. So a lot of the, what the legislature passed were, you know, taken from other bills and tacked on to others, and then sent off to Dwyane. So it was an interesting mix. They're not expected to return to session until after the November election, because a lot of folks are out there campaigning. But they'll return after the election in November for what is known as lame duck, when we expect to see a lot more legislation passed, specifically because this is the end of the General Assembly two-year process. So I'm going to just go over the ones that were passed. I won't go over all of them. I'm just going to go over sort of the highlights. So again, Mike Dwyane only signed one of the 29 bills, and that was the biennial state capital budget. It had a lot of stuff in it, but the highlights are essentially that it directs $4.2 billion to building construction and community projects over the next two years. And of that, $600 million will go to the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission for K through 12 school building construction. Lower-income districts are more likely to get state assistance for new school construction. It also includes, this is more local information, which was really cool, it includes about $4.6 million for Lakeland Community College Engineering Program, building renovations, mechanical and electrical infrastructure replacement, and for the Alliance for Working Together Northeast Ohio Transformation Training Center, which is right here in Menor. Lake Erie College also is expected to receive about a half a million dollars to renovate some spaces in their Health Sciences Center. So that was signed on June 28. But there's a stack of bills also on the governor's desk. We don't really have a timeline for when they need to be signed, but what we do know is he's got about 10 days. It's just that we don't know exactly when they hit his desk, so we don't know when that time clock will be up, but I'm sure we'll hear soon. So House Bill 47 is on his desk. This would require the placement of automated defibrillators in each public and chartered non-public school. House Bill 147 would make changes regarding teacher licensure revocation. There are a lot of other bits and pieces to House Bill 147. I do invite you to take a look at it. This bill was another one of those Frankenstein bills that was amended to include Senate Bill 181. That prohibits schools from charging different game ticket prices based on whether the attendee pays with a card or cash. And this bill would also require students to be charged less than adults. Senate Bill 168, this is known as the Education Deregulation Bill, several changes to teacher and administration licensure evaluation and rating systems, but also to other sort of unrelated areas. It changes the teaching grade bands from 6 to 12 to 7 to 12. It allows the ODEW to establish alternative pathways for bachelor's degree holders to obtain an educator license to work as an administrator or superintendent. So again, changing those qualifications. A lot of this was, I think, done to help alleviate the teacher and administrator shortage. Also, you know, similar approaches when it comes to addressing the bus driver shortage, so kind of playing with pickup times. It also had some language regarding sex education in there. So it was really like a big pot of, a big mix of things, education-related. House Bill 214 asks that each public school adopt a policy regarding certain expectations related to the performance of staff members' professional duties. And it would prohibit anyone from having to commit to a belief, political movement, or ideology. But I believe we already have policies in place to, for to address such things, correct? Yeah. So that one wouldn't affect us too much, but there are other amendments in here in this bill. It also added in Senate Bill 49, which It also added in Senate Bill 49, which requires public school districts to adopt a policy to reasonably accommodate students sincerely held religious beliefs and practices, including three excused absences for religious expression days. Senate Bill 112 is about safety, getting inspections on certain protective doors. That's something probably we're going to want to pay attention to, to make sure our facilities are up to code. Senate Bill 29 is strengthening student privacy laws with regard to student records and monitoring school-issued devices. So again, this is just some of the legislation that's on Dwyane's desk for him to sign. If he doesn't sign it within that 10-day period, it automatically becomes law. None of them would go into effect until January 1. There is one pending bill that I think we should just be aware of, Senate Bill 104. These are changes to the College Credit Plus program, mostly around assessing and reporting student performance, but, so it was all about the CCC program, CCP program, excuse me. But then, House lawmakers amended that bill and added in House Bill 183, which would prohibit transgender students in K-12 and colleges to use bathrooms and locker rooms of the gender with which they identify. So again, just mashing together a lot of this legislation, we'll see what happens as we move forward. That is it for the legislative report.
I just had one question about the enrollment numbers that you had given for homeschool, because I follow that very closely. And in February, had asked Mr. Heath for the numbers, and it was 190. It was 174.
Could you go back to that slide that she's referring to for us?
Because it was 174 in the beginning of the year, but it jumped up in February. The total as of February 20th was 190. So just as an added note.
It's the homeschool, the homeschool slide?
Yeah, it was 174 in the beginning, but as of February 20th, it was 190.
I think it's back, I mean, this is, yes, that's perfect. Thank you. Those are the numbers that Mr. Heath gave me.
Yeah, the email I have from February 20th says, "Total as of 2020, 2024 is 190." So a little bit of a discrepancy. Just wanted to note that, because I follow that very closely.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Student Achievement Report. Mrs. Duffley?
I do. Mrs. Estes is giving everything all set up for us. There we go. So with summer in full swing and students and families enjoying vacation adventures, the Mennor Schools administrative team has been hard at work. While looking back at last year's achievements and challenges, the team is immersed in planning for the upcoming school year. The student-centered work ongoing during the past month has included data analysis of the standardized test results from the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce Development, and the Advanced Placement Test results from the College Board. Mennor's 2024 state scores have been closely examined by the team. While standardized testing is just one aspect of assessment, it offers insights that inform planning. The results are scrutinized statewide and become part of the state report card. It's significant to note that private and charter schools are not required to use these state tests to measure the performance and growth of their pupils. Starting in third grade, Ohio's public school students take state tests each fall to establish a new baseline, and again in spring to assess growth. The spring results come back in June, too late to offer timely feedback that can inform teaching strategies for individual students. However, the broader measure of overall learning in tested areas offers every district a chance to look at longitudinal trends, the impact of curricular changes, alignment of content, and implementation strategies in the classroom. Our elementary students in grades three, four, and five are tested in English, Language Arts, and Math. Fifth graders also take a science exam. Overall, there have been improvements over the past three years, with notable growth in fourth-grade math and all three areas of fifth-grade testing. While third-grade math is lagging at just under 71%, the other areas show students averaging 74.3% or higher on all exams. The administrative team will look at variables within individual buildings to further refine the story the data reveals. When measured against statewide averages, Mennor's scores for all tests in grades three, four, and five exceed the state numbers by 12.8%. When more data becomes available, we'll also measure progress compared to other local and cohort districts. This can reveal opportunities for targeted change and continued improvement. Our students in grades six, seven, and eight are tested in English, Language Arts, and Math. Eighth graders also take a science exam. For middle schoolers, it's easy to see the impact of developmental changes and the adjustment to the demands of the secondary level. Sixth-grade scores are languishing below proficiency in both ELA and Math. Seventh-grade scores are showing positive improvement, with seventh-grade ELA at over 80%. Eighth-grade Math has had a 23% boost over the past three years, while eighth-grade ELA persists as an area of concern. While the scores for sixth, seventh, and eighth are largely disappointing, a look at state averages are revealing. Mennor outperformed those state scores by 15.2%, showing the middle school grades as being especially challenging. Again, the administrative team looks closely at multiple factors in search of solutions and strategies to support student growth and success. In order to follow one of the four Ohio-approved pathways to graduation, Mennor High students must earn a minimum of 20 total credits in specified subjects and take the required and, of course, assessments. These include English Language Arts II, Algebra I or Integrated Math I, Geometry or Integrated Math II, Biology, American History, and American Government. The results of this year's end-of-course exams are positive. All scores have reached the proficient level, with the exception of Algebra I and Geometry, which remains an area of close scrutiny. While that is a disappointingly weak spot, the strides made over the past three years show a 16% improvement, and Algebra I has risen by 7.8%. A particularly strong score in U.S. history at 87.7% is notable. When measured against statewide averages, Mennor's scores for all end-of-course exams exceed the state numbers by 22%. As mentioned before, when more data becomes available, the team will also examine progress compared to other local and cohort districts to identify further opportunities for improvement. Advanced Placement exams are standardized tests designed by the College Board to measure how well a student has mastered the content and skills of a specific advanced placement course. Most of these have an end-of-year exam, but a few courses have different ways to assess learning. For example, AP Art and Design students submit a portfolio work for scoring. Many colleges offer credit, advanced placement, or both, for AP scores of three, four, or five. The array of AP Math exams included pre-calculus, statistics, Calculus AB, Calculus BC, Computer Science Principles, and Computer Science A. 232 students took the tests, and 205 scored a three or higher. The AP Social Studies exams included U.S. History, U.S. Government and Politics, Macroeconomics, Microeconomics, European History, and Human Geography. 193 students took the tests, and 154 earned a score of three or higher. In the area of science, the AP exams covered the following subjects: Biology, Psychology, Chemistry, Physics I, Physics II, Environmental Science, Physics C, Electricity and Magnetism, and Physics C, Mechanics. Of the 120 students who attempted the exams, 97 earned a score of three or higher. Of the 150 students who sat for the AP exams for English Language and Composition and/or English Literature and Composition, 132 earned a score of three or higher. For the Fine Arts AP exams, 29 students attempted Drawing, 2D Art and Design, 3D Art and Design, and Music Theory. 28 earned a score of three or higher. Of the 21 students who sat for World Languages AP exams in Spanish Language and Culture, French Language and Culture, and Spanish Literature and Culture, nine earned a score of three or higher. Finally, of the 132 students who have participated in AP Seminar or AP Research, all but one earned a score of three or higher. The rigor of these academic opportunities gives students valuable learning experiences that help to prepare them to meet the challenges at the college level. Congratulations to them on their dedication and success. Assistant Principal Mr. Russo reports that 100% of the students who enrolled in summer school classes successfully concluded their work and will receive course credit. In some cases, students had remedial work to complete. In other cases, students chose to get a head start on class requirements to open up their schedules, making room for additional classes or time for extracurricular activities. Congratulations to all the students for meeting their personal goals. The Mennor High Robotics Team finished in the top seven at the National Bots IQ 2024 Berg-Basch Invitational held at Robert Morris University in Pennsylvania. The Norty RowoBots Team included members Nick Magistrilli, Katie Polans, Tegan Daly, and Ben Nutter. Their success would not have been possible without the generous support of the Alliance for Working Together and the Mennor Team's longtime sponsor, Lieber Industries, who backed them for the 12th year. Lieber provides industry advisors, including Kenneth Kay. Well done, team. Finally, our hometown Cardinal Mitch Trubisky is back for the Mennor Youth Football Camp. This week, the Mennor High School football program is offering a three-day football camp for all elementary students entering grades one through six. Each participant will be given offensive, defensive, and special teams instruction. Each attendee received a camp t-shirt, a student pass to all home games, and a signed picture with Mitch. The camp is being coached by members of the high school football staff, as well as current players from the Mennor High team. And thank you. And Mr. Heath, did you have anything to add regarding insights and progress with our state scores?
Yeah, just one thing that I'll toss out to the group here real quick. We met as a district leadership team on June 2nd, I believe it was, to really dig into some of the preliminary data that we received. And obviously, third and sixth grade are two of those areas that we're really trying to focus in on right now. I just haven't seen the same level of growth over the last couple of years as some of the other grade levels. And a couple of things that that group has identified, just to share kind of the level and the depth that they really dig into this data. First of all, from third grade, one of the things is maybe a structural piece that we need to take a look at. Obviously, this is the, those students' first opportunity to take state testing. So one of the things to look at is, you know, what, how are we preparing those students with test-taking skills to really be at their best with those results? The other thing is, the state tests are done on computers, and right now, our third graders are still using iPads. So using computers and keyboards for the first time is one of those things that, you know, we're trying to teach them fairly quickly with those skills before the test. But could there be some other things that we would do differently from a technology standpoint to just embed those skills within their content during the course of the year, instead of just trying to cram it in last minute? The third-grade team really took a deep dive into their, into the content standards. A couple of things that they're looking at right now, especially in ELA, looking at informational text and foundational skills are the two main things that they've identified. And that's actually going back into what they do in kindergarten, first, and second grade as well, to make sure that those foundational skills are there, that they can build upon then, especially in that content strand around informational text. So that's one thing that they're going to focus on here this year. From the math standpoint, again, probably more of a structural thing than an instructional thing. Geometry typically is taught towards the end of the year, and what they were noticing is those sub-scores on the third-grade Math test and geometry were much lower. So one of the things that they're looking at is that pacing guide to figure out, can we shift some of those geometry standards a little bit earlier in the year to improve that sub-score, which ultimately would raise the overall scores then as well. So that's third grade. From the sixth-grade standpoint, that, again, I still want to take a really close look at our transition programs there. We've heard on several occasions, not just academically, but socially, behaviorally, emotionally, that that shift from fifth to sixth grade is a real challenge here in this district. And our data is showing that. So we want to take a close look at some of those transition pieces to try and make sure that we support our sixth-grade students a little bit more, maybe than we currently are. From an instructional standpoint, from an academic standpoint, their focus right now, as they took a look at some of those test results, was really just vocabulary acquisition. So they're looking at some strategies around reading across the content areas a little bit more to try and increase that vocabulary acquisition that will help them out on, especially the ELA test moving forward. The other thing, obviously, with our shift in the math resources to using Open Up, we've seen some great success in seventh and eighth grade. We've seen some great success in algebra. We're looking a little bit more into geometry for next year as well, and we've got some of our teachers at the high school level that will be implementing some of those resources next year for the first time. But there's something missing in sixth grade. So we're really going to look at, okay, how is this being implemented there, utilizing our instructional coaches to really focus in on sixth grade, both ELA and Math moving forward?
Do you ever look at a group at whatever grade level that might have a struggle? Because it's, if you're looking at sixth-grade scores over time, it's different kids every year. So if you see a group that has a particularly complicated set of results, it may not make a lot of sense, do you sometimes see consistency with that same kind of a struggle, maybe over the earlier grades?
Yeah, so we look at the data in two different ways. We'll look at just year over year, you know, sixth grade last year to sixth grade this year. And obviously, those are some of the comparisons that are most obvious. But the other thing that we will do is we'll follow cohort data all the way through as well. As you said, different classes have different makeups, and they kind of feed off each other a little bit. And some are lower academically, some are lower athletically, some are lower artistically. It's really, it's interesting to watch a group of kids develop over time. So that's one of the other areas that we're seeing. This year, sixth graders are one of those groups that hasn't performed quite as well in fourth and fifth grade on some of these tests. So that's another area that we're going to look at, too. Are there some additional supports that we can put, what will now be at the seventh-grade level next year? And really focusing in on that teaming aspect that we have at our middle schools in seventh grade still, to make sure that they're getting that academic support that they need.
And now that the ESR funds have gone, there's that balancing act to take a more limited set of resources and distribute them strategically.
Correct. That's the other thing. And the final thing I'll say is, the whole reason we really look at our state averages with the first comparison is because oftentimes, the test itself will be harder or easier from one year to the next. And being able to look at those scores over time as well gives us an idea, okay, yeah, there was something goofy this year because, you know, the state test average went down, you know, 10 points. Why is that? So we have to look at those comparisons as a starting point. But again, we want to make sure that we're looking, how do we compare with our county? How do we compare with those 20 similar districts with the methodology that the state uses? So those cohort districts around the state, how are we comparing with them? And again, I think a lot of us on the administrative team know a lot of administrators in some of those other districts as well. So if we identify another district that's doing quite well in something, we'll reach out to them and say, hey, what are you using? How are you using professional development, instructional coaches? What's the instructional practice around this content area or grade level, so that we can learn from them, too?
Thank you.
At this time, we have the Chief Financial Officer's report and recommendations.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Heath. We closed on our fiscal year, as we all are aware, after the June, late-June meeting. We do have our financials now completed. We do have our financials now completed. As we look at those, when we look at our bottom line, which is the bottom right box, we were in a deficit this year, and we finished at 2.183 deficit, million-dollar deficit for the year. So our expenses exceeded our revenues by about $2.2 million. We look at our revenues for the month. We were up this month in comparison to last year. If you remember, that goes to the fact that we were delayed in receiving our homestead rollback reimbursements from the state. So with that, it did come in, so it was a timing issue, and everything kind of worked out itself by the end. When we look at our revenue at this same time last year, we're $400,000 less. If you remember last year, at this time, I said we had a collection split of about $1 million. So if you look at the local reimbursements compared to last year, we're down $1.5 million. We're not really down. It kind of goes to when we collected the revenues, you know, fiscal year and the way people paid their taxes. The big thing this year that really helped us out is we were about $1.1 million higher in our interest revenue in comparison to last year on our investments. And the reason why we ended up seeing our revenue a little bit higher for the year, where it ended based where I thought it was going to be in May, is the last two months of interest revenue was extremely high. We exceeded, in our last two months, by about $600,000 more than we had in any of the other two months kind of span. So we didn't see some losses that we had seen in some previous months with kind of some of our old interest-bearing investments kind of coming off. So we ended very, very well, which was great. And again, so that led us to be about almost $700,000 higher in revenue than we were expecting in May. When you look at expenses, our expenses were up for the month in comparison to last year, again, timing. And when you look at expenses compared to prior year, we're down almost $11 million. And again, we know most of that's because of the fact that we were down, we didn't make a large transfer as we have in the past, because that's one of the reasons why we made the large transfer last year, because we'd be using that money to support our capital improvements kind of going out. And we've talked about the adjustments that we made. Overall, when we compare where we finished the year to where we were thinking we were going to be in May, we were down about $900,000 in comparison, and the majority of that is actually because the buses that we had bought, the last bus purchase that we had before we made the adjustment to our bus purchasing program, much like last year, they didn't come in yet. So we are cash basis, so because those buses didn't come in, we didn't spend the cash, so the expense looks less. It's a timing issue. That money will be spent, it's going to be spent next year, it's been encumbered, and, you know, we approve those encumbrances and they're rolled over kind of going forward. So overall, again, down to $900,000. And if we look at just kind of a quick summary of where we were throughout the year, you know, this is kind of an ongoing thing that Mr. Wilson had done, and I kind of carry it out just to kind of close out the year. If you look at our September appropriation, you know, you guys know, in my world, I get to talk more than anybody else three times a year, and that's in September, that's in November, and that's in May. But I think you guys are trying to challenge me on those, so we'll see if that continues going into the next fiscal year. But when we look at our appropriations and we look at our two forecasts, and we look at where we thought we were going to be and kind of where we ended up in June, and I should say FY '24, I apologize, with our actuals, we brought in actually, we know, $109.6 million, and we spent $111.8 million. And you can kind of see that our revenues and our expenses are relatively close, you know, to where we actually, where we were projecting in September, November, and May, where we ended up. You can see, we're very close in our revenue. We've kind of dialed that in, which was a request of our Citizens Financial Advisory Group. They wanted us to be much closer in that, because when you're talking about $110 million and you talk 4%, you know, you're still getting an A, right? You're still 96, woo-hoo, but that's $4 million. So over a five-year forecast, that ends up being $20 million that you were understated in your revenue. That can have some significant impact on timing of when we're going to go for levies. So I don't show this to kind of pat myself on the back. I show this in the fact that when we're using our five-year forecast to make decisions, it's important that we check, and you hold me accountable to, you know, being close on those, you know, assumptions that we're making in the budgeting that Mr. Heath and I do together, so that when we are using that forecast to make decisions, we know that it's as reliable as it possibly can be. The ultimate thing that ultimately matters is that we finished the year, like I said, in a negative $2.1 million deficit, which brought our cash balance down to $53 million, $797,000, which is still a healthy cash balance. But because we are deficit spending, we know that over the course of the next five years, that's going to be depleted, and we did have an encumbrance balance of 3.1. And just to remind the board and the community, encumbrances means money that's spent, but it hasn't been spent yet. So it's accounted for, so we have to account for that. So if you're an accountant or you're more familiar with finance, it's a liability. So we have a liability of, you know, cash going down by another $3.1 million that's been authorized, and requisitions have been put in, and a purchase order's been sent. We just haven't received the goods or services yet, so we can't say that it's been expensed. So I'm happy to answer any questions for the board on our financials for the end of the fiscal year '24.
I just had a question, because we've been notified by the Concord trustees that they would like to move forward with an RID or a new development, and it would result in a financial loss for Menter Schools. Can you explain to the community what an RID is and the amount of money that we would lose if they went forward with that? I understand it's within their legal rights, and I was just wondering what communication we have had with the trustees and if they were amicable to discussion on more school-friendly options? I know that they're making a decision, is it in September?
Yeah, so we were notified in mid to late April by requirement that the Concord Township trustees were considering a RID. A RID is a tax abatement. It's equivalent to a TIF, which we're probably all more familiar with than things that we've talked about. But a RID is a residential TIF, for a lack of better ways to explain it. And it's on the increase in property after the RID is approved. So there's a development, Canterwood, off of Hus Road in Concord Township, close to Morley, kind of between Little Mountain, but Morley, but closer to the Morley side.
Yes.
I think, what is that button?
Yep.
Yeah, right? Okay, all right. Concord Township resident. So when it comes down to it, what they're trying to do is they're doing a tax abatement then, where they'll get the proceeds of the Menter exempted village, voted village, that would be then applied to those new residences, would then be not given to us. They'll take that increase, 75% of it, for 10 years, because that's what they're legally allowed to do. They can do a RID for up to 10 years and 75%, much like the city can do TIFs for 75% for 10 years without voter approval. And then we lose that growth on that new construction. Just as a reminder to the board, the only time that we typically see growth on any of our levies is when there's new construction. And the voters have approved for us to receive that village. However, this would basically circumvent that and take that money to the Concord Township. And we would stand to lose, based on my calculations, I'll say approximately, because it ends up being, there was an issue with their filing, that's why they had to delay on July 3rd, and they ended up not voting on the Canterwood legislation that they were proposing, because actually, part of that neighborhood falls into Riverside. So instead of it being 56 houses to Menter Schools, only 30 of them will fall in. I think it's important to note, there is some differences between the other RID that was proposed for Riverside that was voted on on July 3rd and ours. The area that is proposed for Menter is a 55-year and older community, so it's deed-restricted. So the amount of students that we would likely see in those 30 houses is probably minimal. So the impact from an expense standpoint is not as high as it would have been in the other neighborhood where it is not deed-restricted, and I think it's 140-some-plus houses that was going to impact Riverside. So a little bit of a different situation. So, you know, when we look at it from our perspective, you know, we're strictly going to be a loss of revenue. Expense side would be very minimal, but we're talking revenue loss of approximately $1.2 million, is what would be my calculation.
Over the 10 years?
Over the 10 years. So you're looking at about $120,000 a year. And again, that's my estimate. I have been in discussions and had some conversations with the administrator in Concord Township, Mr. Rose. We've talked twice. I've asked to see if we can find some time between now and September to have a discussion to maybe explore other options. And, you know, I'll be meeting, I think, with Ms. Iapolo and Ms. Marchese here next week to talk to them, so that they can reach out to the trustees, so that we can utilize the processes of collaboration to have discussions and have them understand where we're coming from and have them share with us where they're coming from, because obviously, they're very similar to us, where we're all fighting for the same pool of money for property tax. And while $1.2 million doesn't seem like a lot, for us, that's one teacher a year for 10 years that that really kind of equates to. So when you look at $123,000, that's a teacher's salary with benefits plus a little bit of extra. So when we're trying to run lean, and the other piece of the puzzle, you baited me. The other piece of the puzzle that I think we have to consider is if you don't live in Concord Township and you're a Menter resident, that's $1.2 million worth of revenue that you're basically subsidizing for Concord Township. Because that's revenue that we're not receiving, that the voters in our district approved, that they said would come to us. And granted, those people didn't vote on it because they didn't live there, but they didn't vote on the property taxes that they're paying for anything. You know, it's kind of for the township either. So, you know, that's not really a good argument in my mind. And then what happens is everybody who lives in Menter Public Schools then has to make up that $1.2 million. So when we talk about tax abatements, RIDs, TIFs, and things like that, I think for schools, as you hear me say all the time, our revenue is relatively flat. We see very little growth, even when we talk about the valuation increases for 30% that we have shared with the community and how that's going to impact just the inside village. You know, so that's, we'll see a little bit of growth, 2.3%. Not huge, when you're talking about a budget that's $114 million going into the next fiscal year. I get very protective of the revenue that we project. And, you know, we assume that new construction is going to occur, and we kind of project that into our forecasting, so that loss of revenue could have an impact. Again, minimal when you look at it year by year. I mean, I don't argue with the fact that it's, you know, $123,000 on $110 million isn't a huge amount, but when you're talking about the salary of a teacher, and that teacher could be impacting kids, I think it's, you know, we need to have discussions to, because if it's just Canterwood today, what if, you know, Concord Township has a lot of area to grow and build, you know, what if it's a much larger neighborhood that has kids then coming in? And now you have a neighborhood that's got 300 homes, and there's 100 students that are coming in that we have to now educate, and now we're losing the revenue that would have helped offset those costs. I think it's a discussion that the board needs to continue to have with the township so that we can work together, much like we do with the city. Because many times when the city does a TIF, we have to give credit where credit's due, they keep us whole. And they do school-friendly TIFs the majority of the time, and, you know, we don't have to bring those very often to the board, and they use the income tax increase that they have to offset those things.
Mr. Wade, to your knowledge, have we ever had a RID? Have we ever been involved where we've lost revenue from a RID? Is this a new thing, or has it been around a while?
The only residential area that I know that has had a tax abatement is Newell Creek.
Okay.
But other than that, I mean, to the best of my knowledge...
And that was a court case that was...
I can't speak to, I just know, in looking through Mr. Wilson's paperwork, that I saw that Newell Creek was an area that was tax-exempt for whatever purpose it was.
Did the folks at Riverside speak out to the trustees about the situation from their end?
Yes, Mr., I know I've been in touch with their CFO, Gary Placco, who's the CFO at Riverside, also a Menter resident, so him and I talked, and I know he sent in a letter to the Township trustees, and I believe one of their board members may have as well.
Will we be doing the same? Have you decided what our response would be?
I haven't formulated an actual response to this point, because I'd like to sit down and have a discussion. You know, my approach is always collaboration, to work with them to see if they can, you know, and getting a better understanding, because I mean, outside of listening to their hearing and, you know, reading what their trustees have posted on social media, I've not been able to talk to anybody except for, you know, Mr. Rose. And we're, you know, we're all aware that they're within their legal right. But again, when you talk about residential issues, it's a lot different than commercial property, because there's costs that could be associated if this becomes a precedent.
I like the idea of collaborating with them, trying to find some school-friendly alternatives, but we do have to be cognizant of our taxpayers and what that means for them and for our bottom line. So maybe we could discuss this again next month, and hopefully, there's been some dialogue, and then we can discuss where we want to move, because in August, we would still have time, since they're voting in September. Thank you. Do I have a motion for the report and recommendations of Mr. Wade?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, further discussion? Please call the law.
Ms. P.
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchese.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motions carry 5-0.
Is there any unfinished business anyone would like to discuss?
The only thing that I had, and I didn't mention it earlier, but I was asked a question about this, so I just wanted to bring it up. The SRO update, I know Mrs. Cook and I, the last update we received was, hey, here's the contract, looked pretty good. We kind of talked through some little minor details, and then it was supposed to go to the city. So could you just explain where we are? Are we still on track for, like, September to have that contract for two retired police officers?
That's the hope. I sent them the contracts right after we had our meeting, reached out to them, again, when I got back from vacation last week, because I hadn't heard. I had suggested a couple of dates. They got, when I sent a follow-up email, they got back and said, well, we can do this date, but we can't do the rest of this week, because I think Mr. Philippiak's on vacation. So we are looking at either next Thursday or Friday, I believe, are the two dates we've thrown out, waiting to finalize those. Once we have those finalized, we'll hopefully have that contract ready to roll, and, you know, we'll cross our fingers for August, you know, for a potential contract approval here.
Thank you.
I just had one thing, as it pertains to the last meeting. In the future, can we, you know, I had inquired with our president and with Mr. Heath about the meetings, the meeting we're going to have, the work session, and, you know, asked about why didn't we list policies and everything? And the response I received, Mr. Heath, you had said, well, we're not, that's only if we're voting. And then your response, Ms. Cook, was that you can't really speak to me because you've already, because you don't want to violate Open Meetings Act. But I think it was pretty obvious what I was, that I was questioning, what our intentions were going to be, and so I did do some inquiring in that, and now we do know that the sunshine notice should have included more in its description, so that we're all on the same page. And so I ask that in the future, that, you know, what you could have said, Mrs. Cook, is there are one or two board members that are interested in bringing something forward, but there were so many that you could have done that. I would have felt more prepared, and, you know, that wouldn't violate the Open Meetings Act. So in the future, if we could make sure that we're on the same page, because I came into that meeting with thinking we were going to be doing, it was going to look a lot different than what it actually looked like. So just for future.
I can appreciate your comments on that, and I can ask to, I don't typically see the sunshine notices before they go out, so I can ask to see the sunshine notices to see if they're, you know, as detailed as I want them to be. And, you know, I didn't... And, you know, I didn't respond to you with more detail because I had responded to Mrs. Payne. And that's why I said, I've already talked to someone, but please talk to Mr. Wade because I thought the question went to him. And so, it wasn't, certainly wasn't to not discuss with you, but I had already spoke with Mrs. Payne about it and I couldn't violate the special meetings.
But I think we have to be careful because if you talk to Mrs. Payne, you, I'm assuming you knew that this motion was coming up because you guys got legal clarification on if we needed to have policy numbers on it. So, we have to be, you know, be careful about...
I don't, I don't know what you mean.
I think we're talking about a couple of different things here. I think, just to clarify, because my email to Mrs. Cook was very specific and it was in reference to the contract for Mr. Heath and Mr. Wade being on the agenda last minute, being put on that agenda instead of at a regular meeting. I think you're talking about how they did a first reading on the fly, right? Yeah. And I have that discussion too under special board meetings to kind of talk about that.
No, actually, mine, mine, yeah, mine to, to Mrs. Cook was just asking, asking why we didn't, why the, it was about the agenda and then what we, what was going to happen at the meeting, what policies were...
It was also about their contracts and I had already spoken to Mrs. Payne.
Okay. So, you spoke to her about contracts, not about the moving, the voting at that meeting?
I spoke to her about contracts.
Right, okay, okay. I, I misunderstood that.
But yes, to answer your question, I will take a look at any of our sunshine notices and, and have a discussion so we can be really clear.
Okay.
And, and I did consult with legal to make sure after, you know, those concerns came up, were we within our legal right with our sunshine notice and we were.
Mm-hmm.
So, we were in compliance. The sunshine notice was properly notified. However, if you'd like more detail on that, we can, we can work on that. Thank you for bringing that up.
I wrote that down as one of my notes, too.
Okay, thank you.
Also, I'm just, a couple, just if you have follow-ups on the no sell bell-to-bell and I think you were looking at to see if data, if there were drops in behavior issues?
Yes, so, two things with that. One, we'll have more of the data conversation here in August because the administrative teams at each of the buildings has been, have been kind of digging through that as part of the student discipline conversations and meetings that we've had. And then number two, we'll have probably the first reading of that updated policy with the, with those couple of things that we'll take out because we don't have pagers anymore. And then also making sure that the policy reflects what our student handbooks indicate because I think it's a little bit more stringent in the handbooks than it is in the policy. So, we'll make sure that the policy updates are included in that as well. So, I'll make sure and include that in the board update here between now and our August meeting.
Okay. Along that same line, Mr. Heath, I know that we've been talking a lot about discipline and disciplinary, you know, procedures and kind of making those more formalized. And I know one of the big issues that we were concerned about was vaping, vaping and drug use. And we were talking about putting in some protections, especially at the high school level and middle school level with maybe random dogs coming in or searches or things like that. And I didn't know if you had had a chance to speak with our...
So, we haven't looked at, at the dogs yet, but one of the questions that we did ask and we're kind of, we're going to take a closer look at this because there were, there were conflicting reports that we had like, like vaping sensors in the restrooms, too. And some people are like, yeah, I think so, but maybe not, I don't know. Maybe the batteries are not working. I, I don't know. So, we're looking into that component, too. So, looking at both the detectors and then I think as we have more conversation around finalizing that SRO contract, we can also talk about bringing the dogs in, too.
Yeah, I mean, just general, what's our plan, you know, to keep our discipline tight? I know that that's a focus that we all want to, we were all unified behind, you know, really just kind of focusing on those specific issues, people lingering in the bathrooms and things like that.
Yeah.
Any help there would be great to have an update for next time.
Absolutely.
Speaking of the discipline piece, I know we've gotten some questions on this lately, too, and I think it's been something that's been, is going to be worked on and changed. But the outward-facing discipline data, can you just get, give us an update? Because I know there's a lot of, people look at it and it looks like we don't have bullying issues, which we all know we do and we're trying to work on it, but could you speak to that data?
Yeah, and this is one of the challenging pieces for us because the state defines bullying and, and has a very, very strict definition of what that is. So, that's what we have to report. A lot of that has to do with something that is ongoing and pervasive and, you know, how, how do you meet that threshold? So, it was interesting because Mr. Wade actually chimed in during our team meeting this week, referring back to some of his time here as principal at the high school. And, you know, when we had, when we would have an issue with, you know, one incident that took place early on in the year and then there, there wasn't anything else, well, that's not a bullying piece. But if something happens, that initial incident may not be qualified as bullying, but are there additional things that take place throughout the year that then constitutes all of that being bullying? And how do we look at that from a data standpoint? So, we've actually brought that up with our administrative teams, too, and that's why we're looking closely at those definitions, number one, that the state provides us. But then also looking at our definitions here, what, what's bullying, what's harassment, what's intimidation? One of the things that I, I think isn't quite accurate in our data yet is, okay, you've got a couple of middle school boys walking down the hallway that are friends and they're like pushing each other into the lockers and stuff just because that's what they do. And, and what, what codes do we have available to us and what language do we have available to us to classify that as something? And oftentimes, it, it falls into that, you know, bullying, harassment and intimidation type language because that's all we had available to us. So, one of the things that the, the middle school and high school administrative teams have done is they've started to dig into the, the codes that they have available to them now. And they're, they're working with Mr. Lynch and Mr. Bay out of our IT department to see if we might be able to create some additional codes. The other thing that, that will allow us to do, too, is it will allow us to classify different things as either major incidents or minor incidents because that, that's one of the initial reporting pieces. Well, oftentimes, things that are classified as bullying, intimidation and harassment are classified as major incidents when, okay, again, you had two friends walking down the hallway, pushing each other into the lockers that ends up being recorded as a major incident under those definitions that we currently have, but it's really a minor incident and maybe didn't get the suspendable consequence that typically we would have with a major incident. So, can we start to separate those things out a little bit and have some of those designations where we can identify something as major or something as minor within those categories moving forward, too? So, it, it, what started off as what we thought would be a fairly simple conversation ended up in the weeds pretty quickly. But they've had some great conversations. There's some, I always love a good spreadsheet and they've got some unbelievable spreadsheets right now that are, they're kind of working collaboratively in each of the buildings, but they're also looking at their own individual data to identify that. So, again, we'll continue to, to post all of those mean behaviors that we have in our district. It may not actually represent what we're seeing out of the state data and that's where that confusion lies, but we'll try and make that a little bit more clear moving forward as well, once we get these, these codes settled here before the beginning of the school year.
Perfect, thank you.
I appreciate the additional information. Are you seeing trends, like these are areas or settings that we need to focus on?
They're looking at, at some of that. I, I know I shared some of the data back in May or June, as I recall, and they're, they're looking at some of those things again a little bit more clearly because they're, you know, they started explaining some of that to us and that's what kind of took us down the rabbit hole. I think once they, they get to that point where we've got the new code set up, I think we can kind of look at our, our old data and start to identify, okay, where are those trends now? Is that, that mean behavior existing? Absolutely. And, and we actually have a code at the elementary level that we just call it mean behavior. We don't have that, that same type of coding at the middle school, high school level, so it lives somewhere else. So, we're trying to kind of disaggregate those, those codes a little bit more to figure out, okay, what exactly are we talking about? You know, how, what does the bullying data look like? What does the harassment data look like? What does the intimidation data look like? And then what does the mean behavior look like that, you know, might just be, okay, we're joking around a little bit and pushing each other into the lockers? So, that, that may take a little bit more time to sort out, but they're in that process right now.
Thank you. Is there any more unfinished business? Okay, we're going to move on to new business and I've had a request for a first item under new business, which is titled public participation. And I understand Mrs. Iapolo and Mrs. Payne would like to discuss this, so I don't know who would like to start, but...
I could start. That's fine. They kind of go hand in hand, so they're listed as two separate things, but we were kind of discussing about how the last special meetings that we have had, that we felt like the original intention of it was for work sessions, which historically work sessions have been where we just kind of come together, hash it out, talk about different things and then maybe out of that comes, excuse me, comes a first reading at the next regular board meeting. It seems like now we're doing a lot of business in special meetings where those original items like, you know, contracts, addendums for increases for both Mr. Wade and Mr. Heath would normally be at a regular meeting and now those are happening at special meetings along with other first readings and things like that. So, I think if we're going to continue down that path, that it would be advantageous for the public to have an opportunity to speak at a limited amount versus how we do it right now for regular meetings because our policy right now does not allow for public participation at special meetings. So, if we're going to start doing board business, making, you know, bigger decisions and, and votes during those meetings, I think it would be advantageous to our public to have a limited amount of public participation, but kind of add that into our policy. So, that's kind of, I don't know, Rose, if you want to add additional...
Yeah, I echo that, but it's, it, to me, it either has to be that we do allow that or we can make it enough, make it enough for to not, you know, I, again, at this last meeting we had, I, I felt like the, the reasoning behind it was kind of hijacked and we didn't get, we really didn't get to some of the things that I was anticipating we were going to get to. So, maybe we either keep those special meetings focused on what they're designed for and, and anything that can and should be kept for a regular meeting should, should be, you know, with the exception of an emergency, but, or I feel like we owe it to the public if we're going to, if those special meetings are turning into what, basically the format of what we do at a regular meeting. They should have an opportunity.
And I don't mind having it at a limited amount. I don't think three minutes is necessary, but I think even just offering a minute for public participation would be important because we don't cover as many items as we do at, at our regular meeting. But if we're going to start consistently voting on items, the public doesn't have a right, doesn't have an opportunity to speak on, I think it would be important to add that.
A question, is it, you know, since I've only been on the job for a few months now, what, is it not typical to, to vote during special meetings? I mean, how, what has been the, what's been the history there?
Are you asking Mrs. Cook? Who are you asking?
Who are you asking?
I guess non-president, Mr. Wade, you have one.
We've, in my experience, both as a superintendent and as a CFO here at Mentor, it is not uncommon for certain times of the year to have items that are voted on.
During special meetings?
Correct.
Have we had contract addendums done at special meetings prior to this last one?
I can't speak with certainty on that.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of, but I...
At least in my tenure and...
We do a lot, well, I guess that's, yes, we do. I mean, HR items get pulled all the time. Mrs. Burnett will get a lot of stuff to us this time of year because they're trying to hire people and people are resigning. So, yes, I mean, to answer your question, there are contracts that are on for approval and resignations are on for approval quite regularly.
Yeah. But not, I think the biggest concern was that this was, you know, a, and it's, not that I'm saying it one way or the other, but the, you know, addendums for both people that we review really should have had the opportunity to go to the public first. I don't believe in my tenure that we've ever had that happen at a special meeting. And I think, we have had HR items, but there are, there are things that we typically wouldn't have full control over anyways. They're, they're not big contracts or anything like that. So, I just think if we're going to start doing a lot more business in special meetings, we should add a limited amount of, but give the opportunity to the public to speak on those before our final votes.
As I recall, we've had a variety of different topics. I'm trying to think over time that there were short meetings, like for example, when we might look at the end-of-the-year financial report and add something else to that. So, I think people certainly have an open opportunity to contact us via email, by phone, regular mail even. We hear from a lot of people regularly, some people occasionally. I feel like our two hearings of the public at every regular board meeting each month is more than adequate to cover agenda items and non-agenda items. So, I'm in favor of leaving it as it is.
Not sure if that's working. Okay, that's better. So, for me, yeah, I, I tend to agree with Ms. Jessling. There's always an open line of communication. Folks can always share their thoughts with us via email, phone, et cetera. And, you know, for me, as many folks here know, in April, I encouraged us to really take a close look at our public participation protocols because I do believe, and I still do, that they're not very effective. And back in April, I called for more dialogue. So, you know, and for years now, I've sat in these meetings and I've watched these one-way conversations happen from the audience to the board and it, it just doesn't seem to get us anywhere. It hasn't really helped us solve too many problems, though there are a few exceptions to that, I will say. And it's, it's just, it's, it's really not helped us improve. And I am definitely wanting to help us improve, so I'm asking, you know, why would we do more of the same when what we need is to reframe our thinking on this? So, I'm again calling for more dialogue, less division.
Can I ask a question of the board?
Of course.
So, after the last meeting, it was requested, I, I don't want to say unanimously, but I think it was, so if I'm wrong, I apologize, for us to do a better job of ensuring that people who speak in public participation are either residents, guardians, business owners or elected officials. So, that task falls on Mr. Heath and myself. So, we met to discuss how we could potentially do that. And, and the way that we attempted to do that for this meeting is to share with the board and the community, the procedure is, the only way that we can do that without asking for IDs from everybody is to go on the auditor's website, put in the addresses that we get on the forms online. And then that leads to some issues, right? Because not everybody is the owner of the house that they live in. Some people rent. So, then all of a sudden, I have to look, I spent forty-five minutes today on the, the people speaking myself because I was out. I had a doctor appointment, came back. The first forty-five minutes of coming back was to do the research on if the people who are speaking tonight. So, you've paid for one-eighth of my daily salary for me to research whether the community members who are speaking are actually community members, just to put that in the perspective. Because when you look at it, then I have to go on if and a campus because they may be a parent, so then if they're a renter and they add, the name doesn't align to the auditor that I can go on if and a campus and that's that. And we know through enrollment, there's a much more rigorous process. So, then I can confirm that, you know, Bill Wade is actually who he says, even though he lives in Annie Payne's house because he's renting it from Annie. Settle down. Settle down. I'm using examples of people up here. So we know that that's, oh, but he has kids in the school, so that's their address he used, so we know he had to provide a utility bill, so on and so forth, so that. So, but then there's still people on the list who I don't know, or some that I know. Some of the names are familiar, and they've been speaking, so we, I trust that they are, because we've always been using the honor system for them to be able to speak. So I asked, you know, and then the other issue that we have is that people can come up until 7:00 and hand me a green sheet. So I just posed to you these dilemmas that will exist if this is your directive to me specifically and Mr. Heath, to be able to prove this. I won't be able to do that. And I'm definitely not going to be able to do that if you, we continue to allow people to sign up with green sheets until the time that they come in, because there's no way for me at 6:59, as I'm preparing to be prepared for the board meeting, to make sure that I can get the comments and do the minutes and get the papers to the people that need to get to, that we're going to be able to do that. So I just posed to you that, you know, we had a system that was based on the honor system. We had someone who broke it. We will continue to take that into it. I think it's important that the community realizes, and one of the things that I've always said about Mentor, the reason why I came back to Mentor, is because people are passionate about their schools. And if we're passionate about our schools, I would hope that the people who are signing up are people who abide by our policies. But outside of looking at the auditor's website and Infinite Campus, unless I call the, you know, the school resource officer to run everybody's ID, and I say in that tongue-in-cheek, I don't mean that as a serious thing, there's no way really to prove otherwise that the people who are signed up are residents in the district, or owners of the district, or have kids in the district, or are elected officials.
How does other districts, such as like Willoughby East, like, I know they have very similar registration, needs to happen before the start of the meeting, how do they verify?
Of all the conversations I've had with Nick, I've never had that conversation.
Because I don't think we're the exception. I think that that is, I remember when we made that change, we made it, and there was a spreadsheet of all the different schools and what they're all doing, and the majority of them do require registration, do require the same guidelines that we have. So I would assume they're doing the same thing, you know? So I would wonder how they're doing it, or if they're doing it the way we've always done it, which is the honor system, and then if we catch it, then, then...
I'm happy to reach out to Nick. I can text him tomorrow and see what information he has. But, I mean, I just want the board to realize that no matter, you know, we haven't added a layer of scrutiny, it's not going to be foolproof.
And again, we've got to double-check what their policy is too, on who's allowed to participate in their hearing of the public too. I'll have to pull up that spreadsheet again and see what's there.
And are they allowed to sign up right up until the meeting begins? You know, maybe...
Yeah, what's their process to do it?
Could we start by making an adjustment there and make the deadline to speak, to sign up to speak earlier, so that Mr. Wade has at least some time to, you know, to do that research that is needed, but then alleviate that burden, you know, in the hours leading up to the meeting? Could we make that adjustment?
I wouldn't be a proponent of that, because I feel like people should have the option to come until 7:00 PM, and we just heard him say that. There's no guaranteed way anyways. He's got to check all these different things, and without going to, you know, a police officer and saying, hey, can you look these up? There's really no 100% surefire way. So I feel like that's just kind of...
Mr. Wade, what are your thoughts on that?
As long as you can't fire me for making a mistake on it, I mean, I'll do whatever the board wants me to do.
I do want to avoid mistakes. That's what I'm trying to think through.
I mean, the reality is, is it, it's going to be near impossible to, when I get a green sheet at 6:55 or 6:59, to be able to determine if the person lives in the district. So if we have a policy, I would expect that, you know, I hear this quite regularly from all of you, if we have a policy, we might as well follow it. So, I mean, if the person's supposed to be doing that, and we're going to have, expect that the administrative team is going to be responsible for ensuring that the person is abiding by the policy, I need the ability to have time to do that.
Yeah.
Do I need a lot of time? No. I mean, five o'clock would give me two hours to be able to do that. Like I said, I did the thing today in 45 minutes. So it's not like I need a day. I do, I do need a timeframe of at least, I would say, an hour and a half, two hours, because it's not like every day I have the ability just to stop what I'm doing at 5:00 to research who's speaking at tonight's board meeting.
Mr. Wade, how many people on average each meeting are you unable to verify? Are we talking one or two, or are we talking...
Well, I have no litmus test for that, because today was the first time of actually, outside of spot checking who's coming in and looking at the address to make sure it seems reasonable.
I find it interesting that we didn't, we don't want to make a policy move on 17, on 17 books, because that's too much, but we've got one issue, one person broke the rule, and we're like, let's, let's change it. I think it's not a problem yet.
Yep.
It's just not a problem yet. I think down the line, it's something that we are aware of, but I mean, right here, that was a one-time thing, and then the other one...
We had two total, yeah.
In how many years, so...
The term I've been in here, since we've changed it, so it's about two years.
I don't think it's that big of a problem.
Since we changed it, yeah. I, I don't find that necessary. I would like to add more public speaking, not, not take away a timeframe, but...
So just to make sure I've got this clear too then, so the two pieces under new business today, one of two things, either have public participation at special meetings if there will be votes on our contracts, because those are ones that you guys are approving, or keep those contract addendums on the regular meetings.
I would say for that, yes, but any major votes, I think, outside of the normal HR items, that we don't, I mean, we don't really have a whole lot of say in the HR items.
Okay, so like, normal HR items are still okay?
Even, yeah, like, major contract changes, votes. So I guess we're getting into the special meetings, the second part, so I'll just jump right into that too, if that's okay with everybody? Okay. So I think the special meeting, to have an agenda, so as a board member, we should be able to be fully prepared before the meeting, and the way that the last special meeting went, we didn't get heads up on the contract being, on any of the contract addendums or the bonuses until 24 hours before. That was the same time that the public gets that information. It leaves us zero leeway for any kind of corrections that may need to happen. I think we, if we're going to do business in special board meetings, it would be really helpful for us to at least have it, the board, have it three days before, so we have a heads up if we see an issue before it goes to the public, and that we are able to be fully prepared.
I agree. Yeah. Is it possible to get, to get it ahead of time?
I sent it to you before the public, because I know it wasn't in an agenda yet, because I sent you those addendums as soon as I got them from the lawyer immediately, because remember I said, hey, I want you guys to have these as soon as possible...
Wasn't that the day before, though? It was still, the day before?
I believe it was the day before.
Yeah, so that's still the date, I mean, I think...
I can double-check on that. But, but my point is that I sent it to you as soon as possible, and it was all things that we had discussed, and I had said, as soon as the lawyer gets these to you, we may be doing this on this next meeting or the following meeting, depending on how soon our legal team can draft the documentation. And then I followed through with that, sending that to you as soon as I received. So I don't know, it would be hard to say that I could do it sooner, because I literally did it immediately.
Which was our whole point, I think, as to why...
It could have waited, it could have waited a week.
It could have waited until today.
It could have waited until today.
Because 24 hours before is really not, you know, the day before is really not enough time to spring that on a board member.
I'm a little concerned that we're limiting what we can vote on in special board meetings, because whenever we meet, we should be doing board business. We're not meeting to chit-chat. We're meeting to get business done. We're being paid for the meeting. We need to be cognizant of that fact. We are not only the only people meeting, but we have staff that are here cleaning the place. We have security, we have, we're paying police officers, and we're paying police officers when we have special meetings as well. So to take that expense on and then not be able to move the business forward and vote, I don't think that that's very, very good practice for the board.
I don't think she's asking us to not do that, but when it's, when it's necessary, we had a week, you know?
Well, what I heard was, can we not vote on this, or can we not vote on this?
Can we, it, can, it, the issue is, for me, is, it was known that that was going to be a vote, and we were, it wasn't communicated to everybody. And on top of that, whenever possible, even for regular meetings, for me, if we can get the agenda, I know it's, it could be changed, it's subject to change, but as soon as possible, that is appreciated. I think that's the gist of her point.
Yep.
I have one more thing for new business, and it's just something, if, Mr. Heath, if you can, I'd like to look at our policy, or, and if we have one, if it's just the student handbook, but on student discipline measures during summer, and during, outside of school, you and I have exchanged some emails on that. We have students that are coming to camps, they're coming to, you know, they're at the Mentor Rocks and hanging out in, on school property, and we, it's my understanding that there's not much in the form of discipline we can do when a student is on our property. So I think that that's something that we need, I think, to look at too, because, you know, we want to have high standards of our expectations of student behavior outside, you know, during the summer months. So if that's something that you can, we can look at. Thank you.
Got it.
Any more discussion for new business? I wanted to just bring one thing up. I know we've talked in the past about student representatives, and just wondering if we thought about looking into having some student input for our meetings and having a student input.
I love that idea. I know that we need to ensure their safety, so that's, to me, top priority. I know we've had some meetings that have been pretty chaotic, and until we can ensure that safety, you know, I'm not yet comfortable, but definitely open to conversation about it, because I think it's a great idea. I would love to incorporate the student voice.
I've brought up in the past too, when I went to Mentor Schools, I was part of the superintendent's advisory council, and I'd like, I've talked to, Mr. Heath, I've talked to you about it a little bit previously, Mr. Porter.
Yes, yes.
And I do know Mr. Porter did implement it at one time, and then, of course, he went to the elementary school as a principal. So I found when I was in that group many years ago, it to be really beneficial. It was like a rotating group, it was under Dr. Hoynes. It was a rotating group of, I don't know what that is, a rotating group of students from all different, you know, perspectives, and it was really kind of helpful when I was thrown in there.
Did that group meet at the table?
No, they met with just this, and just the superintendent, because I know that, like, Mr. Crowe has a group that he does, but it was just the superintendent, and it was full, like, she was like, tell me everything, you know? And it was very transparent. So I think something like that would be really beneficial with a rotating group of kids, you know?
I like that student input. I think that we're just missing that a bit, and I know some districts have actually students at the table.
Oh.
They're people that are all year, they're the student representatives. So, I don't know, it's just something for us to maybe explore and talk about in the board, but... Okay, I think next we have hearing of the public on any topic. Again, I would like to remind all speakers that per our policy, to speak, you must either reside in the Mentor School District, own a business in the district, be a guardian of a Mentor Public School student, or an elected official in the school boundaries. That's why we are asking you to state your name and address at the podium for the record. And I know that my speech might have been lost a little bit last time when our microphones weren't working, so if we could call up our speakers.
Jaclyn McCormick.
I don't have anything prepared this time. I just want to go over this real quick with you. I know that Mrs. Marchaza thinks that this is all a big waste of time, these harmful books in our schools.
Sorry, point of order. Can we, it's really hard to hear her. Can we turn up the volume, please?
I know that Mrs. Marchaza thinks it's a big waste of time, these harmful books that are in our schools, and that Mrs. Jessling thinks, well, there's only 18, there's not that many, but yet it's too cumbersome to actually look through all the ones we do have to find them, and we want to make our school safe for everyone, but we really can't go through all these books. And when the parents bring it to your attention, you're like, well, we're going to retain it, because we're afraid that publishers might sue us if we take it out of the school system. I mean, it all just sounds absolutely ridiculous. If there really is only 18 books, we've brought them to your attention, take them out. You don't need to make a two-tier system, or a three-tier system, or whatever crap you're, you're trying, when you are so concerned about wasting time, yet you're making all these elaborate plans, and then you're also telling the parents, hey, we have this potentially harmful information in our school that your kid could get a hold of. So if you don't want that, then you need to start reviewing everything that they get from us. I mean, how ridiculous does that sound? A school's supposed to be a safe place, safe for their mental state, safe physically, and yet you're just like, well, it's going to be your job as a parent to make sure that we aren't giving them things that could be harmful to them, instead of just simply removing the few harmful things that us parents bring to your attention. I, I don't understand the logic behind any of this. It makes absolutely no sense. So keep on telling the parents that we have harmful, disturbing things, that we have left-wing ideology in these books that we have in our curriculum. We can't really control it, but we're going to give you the option for you to review everything that we're giving them. This is a public school. And another thing that bothers me is, Mr. Heath had said at a prior meeting that there were 500 incidences, and that we can't, we can't, we can't expel, suspend and expel kids out of this, but there were 500 instances that all were attributed to 26 students. There are alternate schools. If only 26 students are making 500 incidences of violence or behavioral problems, you know, it used to be that you were suspended, and then you were expelled, and you had to go to an alternative school. I don't know why all of the other kids are punished for the few that can't behave, but they're giving, they're still going to remain in the free public school. None of this is making any sense. I implore you, please, do better. You're supposed to make policies. Stop not making policies. You just keep saying, nope, we're not going to make that policy. Nope, we're not going to do that policy. Thanks.
Thank you.
Lynn Mazika.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Madam President, I would like it if you could extend...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, please, please start. The, the time wasn't going on. We started it, thank you.
Okay. Madam President, I would like if you could extend my apologies to Mrs. Payne. When I called out from the audience earlier, I was trying to point out that one of the board members was not speaking into our microphone, and we could not hear her. I meant no disrespect, I just wanted to be able to hear what she said. When our group donated books, we did not realize the problems it would cause. I also didn't realize that Mentor Public Library does not accept donated books media. I would be happy to pick up any books donated by our group, and again, I apologize for any turmoil that we may have caused with our donations. I'd like to also point out that the Mentor Public Library has a different method of parental control of a child's reading material. The school's policy seems to be stronger than the library's. At the library, a minor with an adult card has, I'm sorry, parental approval to check out any book that they want. The school guidelines require each book to be approved by the parents, and I think that our strong guidelines that were passed, or policy... policy with the administrative guidelines that were passed tonight will do our school well, and give parents the control that they need, and students the ability to check books out that are appropriate for them. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Lindsey Wall.
All right. I apologize, I didn't give my address when I spoke before. I'm on Midland Road in Mentor, and I have two kids in the district at Ridge. I appreciate Mr. Heath bringing up his plan to explore different solutions and ideas surrounding discipline, especially for students who are repeating incidents. We are a public school, and every child matters. A lot of the time, these issues are starting at home, so I think the fact that he brought up that we need to explore counseling and different options for these students who are returning after suspension is, is a great idea. We can't just toss a child out because they're causing trouble. We are a public school, a free public school, as was mentioned, and I think it's very important that we remember there is no child left behind, that we give every child a chance. I also want to mention that I find it extremely ironic that the board members who are asking for additional public participation and public comments are the same board members who refuse to allow space in different platforms for free speech. Continuously, I see board members make posts on social media with altered truths, if you will, and then immediately shut off their comments. These people are for dialect, I'm sorry, no, I mean dialogue. They want the back-and-forth conversation, they want the input from all constituents, yet only the constituents that agree with them. I think if they really, truly cared about actual opinions of their constituents, then they would allow that space everywhere. But it's clear to me, and I'm sure it's also clear to others, that what you're asking for is actually space to bash our superintendent, which is disgusting. I think we get enough of that at our regular meetings in the three minutes that are allowed before a vote is taken, but I can tell you, this community supports our superintendent. This community supports our teachers. This community trusts our teachers, the administration, and the people that work in our schools. We have seen that support, and you will continue to see that support. So go ahead and allow your extra time for, for bashing of the employees in this district, because the rest of the community will still show up and will still support these people who are dedicated to making the lives of our children better.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Susan Sednik.
Hello, or good evening again. I just, I wanted to, first off, I wanted to make a note just about what was just said about the public speaking. To me, again, it's amazing that we would consider having people not be able to sign up before the meeting, just so they can be vetted. We don't, we're always talking about how valuable our superintendent's time is, only we're going to task him and Mr. Wade with trying to vet who's going to talk. And I think our honor system works. Yeah, there's going to be some people that get through that, that shouldn't speak, but we didn't have this issue last year when we had another woman, not from the conservative side, but from the liberal side. She also spoke, and there wasn't a huge debate about it. So I don't really think it's an issue, and I think it's sort of an insult that we would try to get Mr. Wade and Mr. Heath to do some kind of menial task like that. I also want to say, in response to an earlier comment, I want to say thank you to Annie and Rose for all the work that you do for the community. We all know that you do not support pornography, and I want to say a special thank you for not killing babies at Planned Parenthood. Okay, and so I also want to make an effort to say that, right now, I'm only speaking to the board. I am not in any way referencing anyone in particular in this district as I make my following points. The specific names I'm going to mention are from past news articles that are going to highlight the concerns that I have. Last year, I spoke about the safety in our schools as it relates to boys being allowed in the girls' restrooms and locker rooms, and I think it's worth repeating. In 2014, Christopher Hambrook, a Canadian man who calls himself Jessica, assaulted several girls and women in a bathroom. After going through the justice system, he was allowed to reside in a women's homeless shelter where he committed more attacks on women. In the 90s, a Florida man named Patrick Hagan, calling himself Patty, punched five teeth out of a woman's head because she had asked why he was in the ladies' room. In 2014, Matthew Harks, who likes to be called Madeline, was a repeat sexual offender who likes to assault girls between the ages of five and eight. After going to a female prison, he is now out and can still use the ladies' room. There's just a lot of examples of how, when we let our feelings override common sense, things become dangerous. I have seen on video kids in our school lunchroom fighting. The last board meeting, we had students confront people of the public. I don't think that that's showing that boys are safe in girls' rooms, judging by what I can see for my, for myself on video. I think I'm, I'm going to challenge you to just stand to do what's right. It's not easy. You're going to be vilified and taken to court for no reason, but you should stand for what's right and model good behavior, so we can show our kids what that's about. Thanks.
Thank you.
Adam Anderson.
Good evening, Mrs. Cook, Superintendent Heath, Mr. Wade, and the board. Thank you for the time. The community has shown in recent polling that we are not for banning books, and to continue the discussion is crazy. If you're a parent that wants to restrict books and what your kids can read, the opt-in system, or the two-tiered system, is very simple. If you don't want your kids to read it, you opt in. Leave everybody else alone. I fully support the two-tiered proposal, as do several in the community. Two school, two of our school board members have been all over social media egging on a convicted felon to harass members of this board, my daughter, and others. My family now requires a protection order to keep my 15-year-old daughter safe from an adult that was recruited and encouraged by these board members. It figures Annie and Rose don't want to make changes to public comments. It was just one incident, right? Just one incident. Let it be your kid. It won't be just one incident for you. My daughter is a student at the high school, and I thought it was a school board member's job, or at least in their best interest, to keep this children in our school district safe. These two school board members are fine with kids in our district being attacked by outsiders coming into our district. Everyone can see the circus our school board meetings have become. Not only that, it is now unsafe for students in the district to come to their own school without being harassed by adults, some of which don't even have children enrolled in these school, in this school system. Next year, there will be seats on this board that are up for election. I know the community will remember who is here to put on a show every month and make every meeting about themselves. The people of Mentor will vote for school board members that want to focus on doing their job in an ethical and productive way. All kids in this district deserve to have board members that don't want to discriminate against any minority groups.
Thank you.
Sarah Everett.
My name's Sarah Everett. I live on Washington Avenue. I have a seventh-grade daughter in Mentor School Systems. She is the fourth generation, between me and my husband, to go to Mentor Schools. I'm here today to speak to you all about Mentor Schools being more transparent, about the physical violence and the bullying in our school district. I did a public records request for the 2023 and 2024 school year, for the harassment, intimidation, and bullying data. After reviewing this data, Mentor Schools listed 213 harassment incidences, 151 threatening, intimidation, menacing, and pushing incidences, and 10 harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents, totaling over 374 incidents district-wide. As a district, you only reported six of these to the state. I got three reports. There's nothing just saying six total. The district is failing our children to keep them safe within the school system. Mr. Heath, you keep saying we can't suspend our way out of this anymore. I can't wait to see what the disciplinary actions that will be implemented next year. What you choose to implement will need to be something monumental and highly significant for the future of Mentor Schools, especially with the world around us rapidly changing. As a school district, we need to adapt to new standards. As a community, we need to be worried about our children's mental health. Will they end up being accountable children? Will they own up to their own mistakes? Or will they be ridden with anxiety and failure? As a board, you are here to set forth the foundation for the future of our students. What you implement now will be the standards for generations to come. As a board, you need to look towards the future for our children, not bicker amongst each other. It takes a village, and we are a mentor-exempt village school district. As a board, you have choices. Don't let history repeat itself. Mentor Schools need to hold the students and parents accountable for their actions. Maybe my daughter wouldn't have been assaulted at a football game last year if we had better consequences. Ohio is a localized state that gives the school board the right to make new disciplinary actions, and they need to be set forth. Real quick, 988 is the total number of homeschooled and private education, which I just got today. So your, your numbers are not correct, and they need to be aligned with what public records we are requesting. So if your numbers you're showing us are not correct, there's more that's not correct, and there is a lot of stuff you are failing our students and our, our community at all, and you're lying. So please stop lying and do better for our children. I got public records. I have copies if you'd like them. Thank you.
Can I just say something really quick? First of all, Mrs. Everett, thank you for speaking, and I'm, I just want to say, on behalf of all of us, I'm sorry for the experience that your daughter went through.
Absolutely.
And I think we disagree on a lot, but I think we are all on the same page that we, we need to fix this discipline. Yeah, yeah.
Our next speaker is John Sanford. Mackenzie McAllister. Then Mr. Martello, you are the last speaker.
Real quick, I want to echo what Mrs. Everett said. You are amazing. Thank you. Parents are the primary decision-maker regarding their child. The role of the school is to aid, not replace. It is the interest and beliefs of parents, not the state, not the board, that guides the child's education. You have the responsibility for supporting our roles as parents, in which you are failing to do. Every time I come to these meetings, the same three board members and the highly-paid Mr. Heath have issues of being trustworthy and transparent. You're trying to manipulate the parents for your own selfish reasons and disgusting beliefs. Why would anyone in their right mind remove a layer of protection for sexually explicit and age-inappropriate material, taking away our decision again to protect our children? Ginny says it is a false concern. No, ma'am, it is a legitimate, genuine concern from myself and many other parents, but thank you for stating it comes from a small amount of people, as if we don't matter. Craig, you were asked if you thought BLM and gender identity were controversial topics. Your answer, and I quote, was "potentially yeah." What kind of response is that? If you want balance and refuse to take this garbage out of our libraries, I suggest you find those books with the opposing view and enter them into your curated collection, since you want to take the book donations away. Let me quote from our friend Rocky that you spent so much time on. "There was never an issue until you went after the kids." You know that, right? If the members of the board continually refuse to work together, the board itself is not going to be successful in moving the district forward. You are not going to get a levy. You are going to, you are part of the, you are not part of the solution. You have become part of the problem. This includes you, Craig. This has become too chaotic to focus on political and cultural issues, where our test scores have proven that our focus should be on the basics. You brought this ridiculous community survey to guide our curriculum. How do we know people outside of the district didn't take the survey? How do we know one person didn't take it more than once? The wording of this survey was very vague and misleading. For example, how would you describe your level of concern regarding the appropriateness of books and materials available in the Library and Media Center? Why didn't it say, "How concerned are you that we have sexually explicit and age-inappropriate books that contain rape in our Library and Media Center?" While you took a whole work meeting to discuss outside speakers, you should have been taking the time to word survey, to word the survey correctly so the answers weren't skewed to your point of view and beliefs. And now our children have to sit through your D E I and S E L B S instead of learning the fundamentals. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Gil Martello, 6880, South Camelot, Mentor, Ohio. Good evening, Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade, and members of the board. I did submit my response to the district survey a few months ago, and to be frank, I found the exercise lacking. The way the questions were posed and the inability to personalize the response prevented me from offering any useful information about my concerns. Moreover, many of my peers who live in the city of Mentor were upset that they were not afforded the opportunity to participate. I believe a more accurate assessment of people's sensibilities can be weighed by reviewing the results of last, the last school board election. Rather than a targeted sample of 2,000 respondents, there were some 31,000 votes cast for five school board candidates. Two conservative candidates campaigned openly and proudly about their platform, while two other opponents on the political left were very coy, never forcefully conveying to the public their allegiance to many left-leaning policies. So what were the results? Well, when you tally up the votes won by the four leading candidates, it was a statistical dead heat. Both the politically-left and the politically-right camps won 47% of the votes cast. This unbiased fact brings into question the veracity of the recent survey results. For a moment, let's set the 50-50 election split aside and go with the assumption that only 25% of the voters have concerns with the library book policy. At the last board meeting, a reference was made about the time spent on the library book issue was not justified, since it only, only 25% of the respondents were concerned. I was stunned by the cavalier nature of this statement. If an officer of a publicly traded company had made a similar statement, effectively disenfranchising 25% of its customer base, a call for their immediate resignation would ensue. In addition, the appearance of using special board meetings to bully an agenda, circumventing the ability of the public to offer their input, strikes me as very underhanded. Despite thousands of dollars spent promoting Issue III last November, and zero, and a zero organized opposition against that proposed levy failed. So I ask you, is it fiscally irresponsible to disenfranchise 25% of the electorate and in another manner attempt to silence public dissent, given the apparent razor-thin margins of possibly not passing another levy? Mr. Heath, I applaud your candor. Acknowledging the left-leaning board members' propensity to abuse the majority is refreshing. This was one of the most intellectually honest- was one of the most intellectually honest statements I have heard at a board meeting the past 24 months. Ladies and gentlemen, we need to do better. Thank you and have a good night.
We do not have an executive session on the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Apple.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned at 11:08 PM.